Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, May 12, 2014. And if we could have Commissioner Whitaker, please lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Commissioner Whitaker. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Please let the record indicate that all commissioners are present.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item one, which we do every spring. The reorganization of the Planning Commission. And the first order of business is the nominations and vote for the chair, which will serve until the first meeting of April 2015. Do we have any nominations?
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Claus for chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to second that nomination.
Okay. That's been nominated and seconded, and with no other nominations, we will vote. And if we can just, I guess we're doing manual tonight. All those in favor of Commissioner Claus?
Aye.
Voting against yourself? Congratulations to the new chair. And next will be nominations and vote for Vice Chair to serve until the first meeting of April 2015. Do we have nomination, please?
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner O'Connor as Vice Chair.
Do we have a second for that?
I will second that.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? And with no other nominations, all those in favor of Commissioner O'Connor as Vice Chair, and also not voting for herself?
(laughing) I'll see.
Congratulations. And with that, we're going to do the cakewalk here and shuffle the deck. So I'm going to slide over and let them take the meeting over, and I'll hand the meeting off to the new chair, Commissioner Claus.
I think what we are going to do now is we are going to recognize our outgoing chairman, Mr. Newkirk, and...
Thank you very much.
And I would like to make a comment that you have done a master job this past year.
Excuse me, Chair Claus, can you please try to speak a little bit more directly into the microphone? We're hearing that the audio is not working out in the foyer, and I'm hoping it's just because we're being a little quiet. Let's see if it helps.
Okay. You have done a masterful job. Much of it was not easy. We thank you greatly.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I was wondering if I could also say a few words to our outgoing chairperson. I guess former Chair Newkirk. It's been a real pleasure serving with you this last year. You've done a phenomenal job. You just have a quiet dignity about you that, as the new chair mentioned, a masterful way of handling very difficult meetings, and we've had several of them over the course of the year. And it's just been an honor to have you as the chair from last year. Thank you.
Through the chair, I'd like to also congratulate Gary on a great year. Your leadership was strong, fair. The comments that we read in the local Dana Point Times of some of the tougher meetings that you chaired, specifically commending you for your fairness and your control of the meeting. My hat's off to you. Well done.
Commissioner Whitaker.
I too would like to add that, Gary, I think you did a great job, and I really look forward to continuing to work with you.
It's been an honor to work with all of you as well.
Okay. All right. As we shall move to, where are we going here? To approval of the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of April, April 28, 2014. It's item number two.
I'd like to make a motion to approve of the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. Do there any corrections or additions? All those in favor, please press your hand.
Aye.
Okay. We now move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during this public comments section on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form available from our secretary? Okay. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda requests to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay. So we will move on to the consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar. We move on to item three. Coastal development permit, CDP 14-0009, and site development permit, SDP 14-0007, to permit the demolition of an existing two-story family dwelling and accessory structure, and the construction of a new two-story, 4,050-square-foot, single-family dwelling with an attached 431-square-foot garage on land located within the city's floodplain and coastal overlay districts at 3567 Beach Road. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Associate Planner Evan Langton will give the next three staff reports.
Excuse me, Evan. Can we just let people know that there are a whole bunch of seats over there, so this is probably a good opportunity to grab a seat? All right. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, evening, Commissioners. On your screen is the presentation for this item. As you mentioned, a coastal development permit and site development permit to allow the demolition of an existing dwelling and the construction of a new one in its place. The item is before you this evening, and because it proposes development, specifically a new, single-family dwelling, on land located within the city's coastal overlay district, otherwise known as the California Coastal Zone, and also within the city's floodplain overlay. The lot in question currently contains a two-story, single-family dwelling built in the late 1950s, as well as a detached storage shed. I'll give you a vicinity map here. It's located in the Beach Road neighborhood or community. All the built-out community, established community of exclusively single-family and duplex dwellings. The scope of work would see the demolition of the property's current structure and the construction of a new, two-story, single-family dwelling constructed in its place. That home would comprise approximately 4,600 square feet and have an attached 431-square-foot two-car garage. The home fronts the Pacific Ocean, of course, and, as I said, is located within our floodplain overlay district. Those locations dictate very specific design requirements, mostly based in safety and because this part of Dana Point is subject to greater wave inundation, larger waves and more of them. So to that end, to protect habitable portions of new, single-family dwellings, structures are required to be elevated, to be planted on caissons, rooted into the earth, and again, elevated above the sand, above what are estimated to be the highest breaking waves, and so that in the event of a catastrophic event, water will flow under the house, through the house, and again, protect habitable portions of the building. On your screen, well, I should say that appropriate height is discovered by, or recommended by, a qualified expert, and via, of course, a wave run-up report. The section on your screen shows the caissons, those are the red rectangles, and the yellow arrow, which illustrates the flow-through of water from the Pacific Ocean, which would be at the left side of the screen and on through, I'm sorry, at the right of the screen, and on through to the left, which would be Beach Road. Garages are allowed to be below that recommended elevated height, but only when something called a breakaway panel is included, and that's illustrated right about here, which allows water, again, to flow through under the house and onto the streets, and protecting those habitable portions of the building above. To go through the floors, again, the home is two stories, but would have three levels: a first floor, a mezzanine level, and then the second story. This is the first floor. You can see a two-car garage. Pretty typical home, living spaces, entertainment spaces on the first floor. The second floor contains the majority of the bedrooms, accessory rooms like offices and so forth. Elevation views of the structure, there's a deck, also elevated on caissons on both sides of the house, and a deck at the rear, also elevated and mounted on caissons. The home contains a variety of materials, stone, wood, and so forth. A modern home, of course. Overall height would be 28 feet, and that's measured above, I should say, the recommended base flood elevation, again, that height that the whole of the house is elevated to and protected from wave action. In summary, and here's my summary, there it is. The home complies with all development standards of the Dana Point zoning code, and no variances are requested from standards, and the home fits within its zoning envelope, within setbacks, it complies with the height requirements, landscaping coverage requirements, and so on. And so because it complies with those standards, because all findings can be made for its coastal development permit, staff recommends for approval of the project as proposed. But finally, no items, no letters of correspondence, or other material has been received by staff for this project. And so again, staff recommends for approval, subject to the conditions that are in your resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? In that case, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker slips?
We have none.
Commissioner comments? Is there anyone ready to vote?
One.
Vice Chair?
(inaudible).
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. First, I'm going to close the public hearing, then we come to Commissioners. Commissioner O'Connor. Vice Chair O'Connor.
Well, my only comment is I think the boys got short-changed in their bedroom, and the girls have quite a suite there with a big closet and a big bedroom. But other than that, I always admire people who can live on Beach Road. I could never close my eyes at night with all those waves coming, just never know if it's going to be the big one. But I think it's a nice design, and I wish you the best of luck.
I think it's a very fitting property or project for the area. It's great to see that area going through a lot of redevelopment, remodeling, a lot of the older houses being upgraded, and I'm in support of the project.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow Commissioners. It's a good project. It's nice-looking, and I think all the safety measures are in place. And I'm very happy to see that another new project is going on on Beach Road.
Commissioner Whitaker?
I agree with my fellow Commissioners. I think it's a very nice project and nicely designed, and I think it'll be an asset for the city.
I also agree with my fellow Commissioners. I'm very proud of people who live on Beach Road because it's not easy to be there when you have the Pacific Ocean as in your backyard. And consistently, through the years of approving things on Beach Road, we have found that you're very careful to do it right, do it right the first time, and keep it right, and that allows you the privilege of living on that great street.
I'm ready to make a motion, if you'd like. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Dana Point, California, approving coastal development permit, CDP 14-0009, and site development permit, SDP 14-0007, to allow the demolition of an existing, single-family dwelling and accessory structure, and the construction of a new, two-story, 4,050-square-foot, single-family dwelling with an attached 431-square-foot garage on land located within the city's floodplain and coastal overlay districts at 35167 Beach Road.
How second's that?
I'll second. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. And we move on to item number four, which is coastal development permit, CDP 14-0007, to permit the construction of a new, two-story, 2,856-square-foot, single-family dwelling with an attached 811-square-foot, three-vehicle garage on vacant land located at 24791 Anchor Lantern. Do we have a staff report?
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself on this issue. I happen to live within the 500-foot radius of the project.
Good evening again. The presentation for this item is on your screen. As you mentioned, a CDP to allow the construction of a new, single-family dwelling on a presently vacant lot. The item is before you in similar fashion to the previous item, and because it proposes development, specifically a single-family dwelling, on land that's located within the city's coastal overlay district, even more specifically within the, or rather, is subject to the Dana Point specific plan, which calls for the processing of a coastal development permit for construction of new, single-family homes. The lot's located in Lantern Bay Estates and all but built-out subdivision of exclusively single-family dwellings. This would be the second, or rather, one of only two, I should say, remaining undeveloped lots within that 44-lot community, so they're, again, almost completely built out. The subject application, again, proposes a new, two-story, single-family dwelling. We'll go into some more detail about it at the moment. As I mentioned, the lot is vacant. These are some shots of the property as viewed from Golden Lantern, heading down toward the harbor. Lot does contain a six-foot property line wall that traverses several lots, and you can see in the two photographs there, but otherwise, the lot wall, graded, is completely undeveloped and bereft of landscaping, for that matter. On that lot, as I said, the application would see the construction of a two-story, single-family dwelling, the footprint of which you can see here. That home would comprise about 2,900 square feet with an 800 or so, square-foot, three-vehicle garage. The home would stand 28 feet in height, would cover about a third or so of its lot, which is far less than is possible under its zoning within the Dana Point specific plan. Forty-three percent would be comprised of landscaping, again, well under the potential maximum, I'm sorry, well in excess, I should say, of the minimum coverage requirement. I'm going through the floor plan. Lower level, the first floor, the three-car garage, as I mentioned before, master bedroom, study, some of the usual rooms you'd find in a, a single-family dwelling. Upper level contains the kitchen, a great room, and some accessory bedrooms, along with eight deck. The architectural style is a derivative of Spanish Mediterranean, so stucco siding on the outside, or along the surface of the building, tile rooftops, that sort of thing. You can see elevation views, along with some computer renderings of what the home would look like. The home, as with previous item, complies with its development standards and as contained within the Dana Point specific plan. No variances are requested from standards, it fits within its zoning envelope, height, lot coverage, et cetera, et cetera. Approval has been granted by the Lantern Bay Estates Homeowners Association, and staff has evidence of that on record. And because all findings can be made for approval of the CDP, we recommend for approval of the project as proposed, and again, subject to the conditions in the resolution for the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it for questions from the Commissioners? We have no questions? Okay. In that case, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker slips?
Uh, yes.
One person.
Do you want me to open the public hearing?
No, I just opened it.
Okay. This is Michael Luna.
Yeah, okay. Hello?
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, city staff, my name is Michael Luna. I'm the architect on the project and owner's representative. I'm here tonight with the Tupper's, the owners of the proposed house, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. There any questions? Okay. So I will close the public hearing and bring it to the Commissioners.
Madam Chair, this Commissioner comment period, correct?
Yes.
I think this is a lovely house. It meets all the zoning standards, and I think it will, it's going to have a beautiful view of the ocean from it, and I think it's very exciting, and I hope you're excited about it. And so I'm in support of this project.
Yes, Madam Chair, I agree with my fellow Commissioner. This is an excellent-looking project, and I think it's going to be a great addition to this area, as well as this overall city, and all for this project.
I agree with the Commissioners' comments prior, and I think it's great to see that a few remaining vacant lots in some of these areas are getting developed. I think it's a great sign for Dana Point and our future, so I'm fully supportive of it as well.
I agree with my fellow Commissioners. It's nice to see what is really a very, very small lot that's going to be turned into something very nice for the community.
I'd like to make a motion?
Please.
For approval of resolution of the Planning Commission approving coastal development permit allowing construction of a new, two-story, 2,856-square-foot, single-family dwelling with an attached 811-square-foot, three-vehicle garage on vacant land located at 24791 Anchor Lantern.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We can now bring back Commissioner. Okay. So we move to item five, which is coastal development permit, CDP 13-00012, and minor site development permit, SDP 13-0021M, to permit the construction of a new, two-story, 7,504-square-foot, single-family dwelling with an attached 834-square-foot garage on a vacant coastal bluff lot at 24682 El Camino Capistrano. Do we have a staff report?
Hello again. Presentation for this item on your screen, as you mentioned, a CDP and an SDP to allow the construction of a, a single-family dwelling on a presently vacant lot. And the items before you, and for similar reasons as the previous two items, proposes development on land that's located within the city's coastal overlay district, otherwise known as the California Coastal Zone, but more specifically because the lot contains a coastal bluff and proposes development within 50 feet of the edge of that bluff. The property, as I mentioned, is presently undeveloped. It's been graded, but nonetheless descends downward from its highest point, fronting El Camino Capistrano, the street, down toward the bluff, down toward the harbor, Pacific Ocean beyond. The neighborhood along El Camino Capistrano is one of the most established, most historic in the city of Dana Point, contains a number of homes that date back to the city's original founding in the 1920s and 1930s. And so predictably, this is one of the few remaining vacant lots in this community. A shot of the lot as it currently sits, as I mentioned, it's been graded but descends downward, contains very little, if any, vegetation, as you can see. Has never been developed, as far as we can tell. The lot contains, as I said, a coastal bluff, which is essentially a cliff that descends directly downward to the harbor and to the ocean, and historically has been subject to erosion from wave forces. Homes proposed on such lots, as with homes on Beet Road, can require specific development standards rooted primarily in safety. Bluffs tend to erode over time, and so setbacks specifically are required, unique setbacks are required for new homes on those lots, and to protect the home from possible destruction, of course, but also to protect the bluff itself, which is qualified as a unique environmental resource per our various planning documents. Anyway, the current project would build a new, single-family dwelling, the site plan for which you can see here on your screen. Back to the setbacks, there's a default of sort 40-foot setback from wherever the edge of bluff is discovered to be, and that discovery is made, of course, by an expert, by a geologist, and via a report given to the city. That said, if that report finds that a deeper or a greater setback is required, that becomes the setback for the rear of the property. In this case, again, with 40 foot as a default, 30 feet was recommended as the most appropriate setback from the edge of bluff, and the edge of bluff being that red arrow that you see here on the left of your screen. 30 feet, again, was recommended as the most appropriate structure setback, and so the home, it wouldn't be any closer than that, but in this case, our home is going to be even a little further back than that. You can see the extent of the footprint of the home here, roughly about 40, 40 to 50 feet or so back from the edge of bluff, again, the red line. The hatching you see here, this is a new swimming pool that would be proposed, and I'll talk about that a bit more, but, or again, where a minimum setback is recommended, the home is to be set back even further than that. Two-story home comprising about 7,500 square feet with an attached 800-square-foot, four-vehicle garage, five total bedrooms. We're looking at the first floor here and split in two. So on the picture on the right side, the arrow will point toward the front of the property. This would be the front of the home. You'd walk through the entryway, there's a gym here, a courtyard, garage on the left side, along with some living spaces, entertaining spaces here. And I should say that the floor plan continues on the left side of your screen, continuing downward to the bottom left, which would be the rear or the bluff side of the property. The second floor, again, the front of the house would be at the top right of your screen, the bottom, or I'm sorry, back half of the property would be at the bottom left. All living or bedroom spaces are on the second floor, as you can see, five total bedrooms, as I mentioned, along with a handful of accessory bedrooms like dens, offices, that sort of thing. A couple of the three-dimensional views of the home, the front of the property, as you can see from the box there, would be at the bottom right. So we have our garage, the entry, the gym I mentioned earlier, the bluff in the back of the property would be at the upper left. And then the rear view, so the bluff, rear part of the property is the bottom right. This is the infinity swimming pool I mentioned before, and the line of the 30-foot recommended setback for all structures from the edge of bluff, balcony at the back, and so forth. Overall height for the house would be 24 feet, and as, with a flat roof, as you can see. The project, as with the previous application, is subject to standards of the Dana Point specific plan. It's been found to comply with all of those standards, heights, lot coverage, landscaping, and so forth. No deviations from code are requested, no variances and so forth. And so because it does comply with all standards, staff recommends for approval of this project as well, subject to the conditions in the project's resolution. Thank you.
Okay. The questions?
Yes, Chair. Evan, tell me a little bit about the type of plants that are going to go in this project, and is there going to be any sprinkler systems?
No. The code requires that within the setback from the edge of the coastal bluff, only native drought-tolerant plantings be permitted. Moreover, only half of that area can be devoted to hardscape, cement, or what have you. The rest of it has to be landscaping. No irrigation is allowed in that space, and none is proposed for this plan, for this project. Forward toward the street from that, it's at the applicant's discretion as to what kinds of plantings they'd like to have. Of course, we recommend native and drought-tolerant in all of our projects. And as I, from the preliminary landscaping plan that's been submitted, it's more or less a mixture of native and drought-tolerant all throughout the property, but, but again, within that area, that setback area from edge of bluff, native, drought-tolerant, no irrigation is required, and that's what's been proposed.
And also, I would assume that we're going to take all the water from the hardscape in the back and take it forward to the street?
Correct, yeah.
And that's going to go through a sump pump?
Correct, yep. As I mentioned, the lot as it currently sits descends in the wrong direction, you could say, per our code. Water by code is supposed to flow toward the front of the property, toward the street. In this case, the natural topography or the as-graded topography flows downward toward the bluff. So to correct that, a little bit of fill is being added and to route water toward a sump, which would then pump it toward the street. That would occur in the back one-half of the property. The front one-half, again, fill is being added and to just allow gravity to allow water to drain downward toward the street. So a pump is being used for a part of the property, otherwise it's gravity just allowing sheet flow down toward the streets.
And also, for any overflow for the pool?
If there is overflow, that would be yes. It would be routed to the sump and pumped back up to the street.
Okay, thank you.
No?
Evan, I just have a quick question on the 30 inches of fill. The lot dips quite a bit as it moves down. Is the fill going to be 30 inches above street level and grading it towards the street on El Camino Capistrano? Or will the front of that property be 30 inches above and then higher in the back? Is it the maximum going to be 30 inches of fill?
Correct, yeah. The maximum to be added is 30 inches and it's, as far as its elevation above the street, I need to check the plans again, but it will be higher than the street, again, because gravity for the front one-half of the property will allow sheet flow down toward the street. The back half, you couldn't add, you couldn't add more, you'd have to add quite a bit more, I should say, than 30 inches of fill and to allow gravity to allow water to flow. So instead, the water is being routed to the south, I believe it would be, and again, caught by the sump and then pumped upward. So the front half drains by gravity, the other half because simply you have to add so much fill that you probably wouldn't be able to construct a second story.
A property sitting basically at its level, which is at sidewalk level, more fills angling back?
Correct, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker slips? There are none? There are none, okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Come back to our commissioners. Who wants to start off?
Madam Chair, I'll start. We've, over the last number of months, of course, we've been looking at some properties along this particular area and I'm happy to see that we're meeting the standards of getting the water from the bluff out to the street. Of course, these bluffs have had slippage and it can be very dangerous. As with the last one that we looked at, I think I made my feelings known, I'm not wild about pools. That weight and so forth on the, that close to the bluff top. However, if the engineering reports come back and can support that, I'm in agreement with this plan. Looks like a good project that fits the size of this lot. I'm just concerned about the added weight 30 feet back from the bluff top for the pool. And I would assume that the engineering reports can support that.
Vice Chair.
I would agree with Commissioner Denton. You know, it's always nice now that we're not putting irrigation on the slopes because so many times, you know, gardeners or valves fail and, you know, the irrigation pipes leak and down goes the slope onto PCH or, not in this case, but it does some damage and it's, I'm glad that we're avoiding that and putting in drought-tolerant plants. I think that's a good thing that we're starting to do in Dana Point. I have no real comments other than that. Obviously, the pools are always an issue on these bluff-top lots, like Commissioner Denton was saying. And we have to hope that the geology reports are in engineering, they know what they're doing. And so I'm, I, there's nothing really here that I can say that I don't want to approve it. I mean, I think it's a fine project and I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Whitaker.
This is, you know, this really, last time we met, we also had a bluff-top, single-family development, I mean, house with a pool on the bluff. And I, we all were concerned about that pool and we're really relying on that study. And as I pointed out, you know, the city is indemnified if that, there should be a failure there because of the pool or the development. So I'm in support of it, but I think, you know, maybe considerations should be given to bluff-top developments and give us a little more guidance on when these projects come in and they do have pools or maybe zoning prohibits pools. You know, we need some more direction because now, really, there's nothing to, even though we sort of feel that it's not a good idea, we don't really have anything to give us direction on that. So I'll be supporting the project.
Thank you.
I have nothing further to add other than my agreement with the commissioner's comments and be willing to make a motion if Chair would...
I actually have a, I have a comment. I am delighted that something is finally being built on this, on this piece of land. It's a beautiful piece of land. I know at least one fellow commissioner and I have been through two tries at somebody trying to build on this and they haven't worked out. There is what, directly next to it is one of the finest pieces of architecture in the city from my point of view. So to have another fine architectural thing next to it and to make that street just a better street for having it is, for me, kind of a treat. So I'm open to.
Make a motion to approve a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Dana Point, California, approving coastal development permit, CDP 13-0012, to allow the construction of a new two-story, 7,504-square-foot, single-family dwelling with an attached 834-square-foot garage on a vacant coastal bluff lot and minor site development permit, SDP 13-0021M, to allow measurement of building height from the top of a 30-inch fill at 24682 El Camino Capistrano.
I'll second the motion.
Are those in favor? Okay, motion passes. We will now move on to item six, which I believe is why all of you people are here. Coastal development permit, CDP 13-0018, for development, otherwise referred to as commercial core project, within the Orange County Dana Point Harbor. The commercial core project includes renovations of existing buildings, phased demolition of existing buildings, along with phased construction of new commercial buildings, reconfiguration of streets and other infrastructure improvements, a new parking structure, landscape improvements in parking management and a master sign plan for the harbor. Our city architect and planning manager will give the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Congratulations and Vice Chair and other commissioners, good evening. My presentation tonight, as with some of our more recent, larger projects, can be somewhat long and so in the interest of keeping it, you know, as short and concise as it needs to be, we'll have somewhat of a tag-team approach with the county staff. I will talk about primarily about what the role of the Planning Commission is and some brief history of the project so that, you know, but I try to be brief so I don't lose my voice, which appears to be disappearing quickly. As we were preparing the staff report and this presentation tonight, I was looking at the date. And if you could switch to my screen, Denise? I was putting the date on the presentation and it's, of course, today, May 12, 2014. I started with the city just a little over 10 years ago and I was immediately involved in meetings with the county for this project. And so this hearing is obviously a long time coming. Initially, all the meetings were with the county and the harbor. And then we had a number of hearings that you may be familiar with. I'm sure a lot of people in the room are familiar with the past 10 years. We have a couple new commissioners since the commission last considered the local coastal plan amendment for the harbor. In total, though, there were not only, there were probably over 100 meetings, if you count all the meetings that the county has had with various groups, but at the city here, we've had eight public hearings for the master plan, essentially the local coastal plan for the harbor. Two of them in 2006 with the Planning Commission. And then after that, we had a total of another eight meetings with the city council. And subsequent to that, there were five meetings with the Coastal Commission. I saw it up there for just a second. It came up. Technical difficulties. I saw it there for a second. I don't know how I'm going to dim the...
There are some seats. You might want to come on in. If anyone's out in the lobby, there are some seats inside. There are seats over there. You can head in that direction.
Starting over. If you could dim the lights. So this is the meeting for the coastal development permit for the Dana Point Harbor Revitalization Plan Improvements. Here's an aerial view of the harbor. As you know, it was established in 1970. The yellow line indicates the planning area for the Dana Point Harbor Revitalization Plan Regulations. This is the cover of the Dana Point Harbor Revitalization Plan and District Regulations. As you see, the date down here, October 6, 2011, when it was finally certified by the California Coastal Commission. As I said earlier, this plan, which is really the master plan for the harbor and includes all the policies and regulations that govern development within the harbor. The city's Planning Commission had held two hearings in 2006. The city council held eight hearings between 2006 and 2011. California Coastal Commission held five hearings between 2009 and 2011. This, the district regulations is the local coastal plan for the harbor. It was a plan that was very, what I would call, project-driven in that not only the environmental impact report, but the regulations themselves were designed around very project-specific design. The Planning Commission at the time, as well as the council and the Coastal Commission, reviewed many aspects of the design concepts, of which now you'll be considering a coastal development permit. But in essence, other than some of the details, the plan has not changed since that time it was originally looked at and considered. Tonight, again, previously what was approved were the development regulations. Tonight, it's actually a coastal development permit for the improvements. The plan had 12 planning areas. The harbor was broken up into 12 planning areas. Tonight, they'll be considering development in just Planning Area 1 and Planning Area 2 and a very small portion of Planning Area 3. But primarily, this commercial core project is contained in this area. Here's an aerial showing the area that we'll be considering tonight. As I'm blowing up, getting into, closer into that area, we're looking at the existing harbor. Here's Harbor Drive, Street of the Golden Lantern, and as it comes into the harbor. You'll see over here, we've got what's called Mariners Village and Mariners Alley, where you've got the bread. You've got the El Torito and Harpoon Henry's over here in this area. Down this area, you're familiar with Dana Wharf, where you've got the Wind &amp; Sea, Port Henry's, Turks, the old Jolly Roger here, which a new restaurant is currently doing some tenant improvements in there. And then over here is the boat launch area, the dry boat storage in this area. We've got the shipyard, existing shipyard over here. And again, this is the area where we're considering all the new improvements. This project includes what's been called the commercial core project. Also being considered tonight is a parking management plan for the whole harbor, a master sign program also for the commercial area of the harbor. The project includes, but isn't limited, is not limited to phased demolition of the existing commercial and boater support facilities in this area. There'll be, along with that, phased construction of new retail and restaurant space, office space in the commercial core. There's going to be renovation of the existing buildings in the Dana Wharf area. Those will not, for the most part, be torn down, they'll be renovated. But all of the infrastructure in that will be replaced. In addition, there'll be a new two-level parking deck. There'll be a fest, there is what, between the commercial area and the boats, there's a festival plaza area. We'll get into more detail. There's, throughout this area are a number of site improvements, including all the landscaping. There'll be reconfigured streets, sidewalks. The circulation in the harbor will be greatly improved, new parking areas and boat storage areas. Underground, there'll be all kinds of infrastructure improvements, including new improvements that will greatly improve the water quality of the harbor. There'll be new sewer water improvements underground. Also, as I said, part of this coastal development permit includes a parking management plan for the harbor and a master sign program for the commercial core. There are some improvements primarily over in Planning Area 2, which, I'm sorry, Planning Area 1, if I go back over here, if you go back, this area over here, which are partially on city jurisdiction for coastal developments, but because they also involve and hang over the water, they are in the coastal commission's jurisdiction. Everything in the water here is in the coastal commission's jurisdiction for a coastal development permit. Things that cross over the border are really in both the city's and coastal commission's jurisdiction. Since the coastal commission needs to approve a coastal development permit for those items, tonight, you'll also be considering some items that the coastal commission will have to approve. Those are, and we'll be asking for approval in concept for those structures. It's considered a consolidated application where it's both the city and the coastal commission. This includes the new dry stack boat storage building, which includes operation offices, waiting areas, some commercial retail space, boat maintenance areas, gangways, piles, utility connections, there's a large crane which will be moving boats, and also, there is replacement of a large storm drain underneath that area, and there's an outfall which, of course, is right on the water, so that includes coastal commission approval also. In addition, is part of your consideration here tonight is all of the conditions of approval, including project conditions and a mitigation monitoring program, which was part of the final EIR for the project that was certified by the county. Again, the harbor staff will be here to present in more detail this plan, but here is the plan as it is fully anticipated with demolition of the existing commercial buildings in this area and the new Mariners Village commercial area here, of which, and there've been a number of questions, well, how does the timing work between this? The harbor staff can explain that in more detail, but essentially, the intent here was to build these for the tenants that currently exist here. So once these are built, the current tenants would theoretically move over to these buildings and then the old buildings would then be demolished. Renovation of these buildings here, there is one new building which will be built at Dana Wharf and a portion of the existing removed. Again, this is the dry stack storage building with the crane and the outfall improvements in this area, which you would be considering under all the same criteria that is in the regulatory plan that you would be considering here. The technicality is that the CDP is approved by the coastal commission here, but we will be looking, and the county would be looking to you, as well as the coastal commission, for approval in the concept for those items. There are a number of findings, there are nine total findings required for your approval of the coastal development permit. I won't go into those in all detail, but the findings are outlined in your staff report as well as the recommended completed findings in the draft resolution. Staff recommendation that you approve the CDP for this project, including the parking management plan, the master sign program, and the design for the dry stack storage building and the associated improvements adjacent to that, including the storm drain. That's all within the coastal commission's permit jurisdiction. As well, we have 53 conditions of approval. In addition, one of those approvals include, one of those conditions of approval includes the project conditions and mitigation monitoring program for the project. If there are any conditions in the mitigation monitoring program that are in conflict, and I don't see any, but potentially, if there are any conditions that are in conflict with our other 53 conditions, there is also conditions as the more restrictive would apply. That concludes my presentation. At this point, I would, you could ask me questions, or we can turn it over to the county to do their presentation. Thank you.
What would be, what would we prefer?
I'd like to hear the county's presentation and then hold off my questions until I hear both.
Commissioner Denton.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a declaration that I did attend a meeting that was held by the staff, the county staff, that showed a presentation to me of a number of the items that we'll probably see again tonight, so I wanted to put that on the record.
I did as well, and I believe all of us did individually with county staff, and I think the majority of us with city staff as well.
Vice Chair, how would you like to approve?
I agree with the other commissioners, I think we should hear from county staff.
Commissioner Nuker.
Thanks for remembering that.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, staff. I'm Brad Gross, Director of OC Dana Point Harbor. Oh, I was gonna say, I'm gonna stall a moment while I get the presentation up. Before I get started, I'd like to extend my thanks to our staff, Lisa Smith, I have a whole slew of consultants that have been working on this, I can't remember everybody's name, nor can I thank everybody, but I do want to thank John Conk and Craig Hoffman who've been with us the longest, and it's their good work that's providing you these presentations, and everything that they do, I just get to present, and I just want them to know how much I appreciate their hard work. So, let's get started with the presentation. Can you still hear me as I walk away? John touched a moment on the public meetings that we've had. This slide represents 150 public meetings, John touched on a few of them. This is not all the public meetings that we've had since the inception of this project. This slide actually starts in 2002 and ends in 2012. There's 18 public hearings where there have been comments delivered from stakeholders and they're all identified in the highlighted lines of this slide. Some of the meetings that John did not mention were the meetings that also took place at the planning commission for the county and the county board of supervisors. I'm gonna run through these, John showed some of the slides that we have, this is the planning areas that we're gonna be talking about today, I think you're all familiar with them, and I think everybody in the audience is familiar with them also. This is the interim, the existing conditions, this is just a drawing that's taken out of the district regulations. This slide right here, I had it put in, this is the original slide that was presented to the planning commission in 2006. This is the original plan, and this is the plan that had some very significant changes done based on the public hearing. The significant one is this, this plan had two dry boat storage buildings, you can see the elimination of one of those buildings. Because of that, we are then at this plan here. This is the plan that was considered throughout the public hearings, as John was saying, over the last 10 years, this was presented to the coastal commission. This is the plan that we've always presented that has the dry boat storage building in it. It actually has the original configuration of the parking deck, which through some of the stakeholder meetings that we had specifically with the boaters, it was requested of us to narrow that deck and take this, what they were calling the panhandle, out of the plan. What that did is it elongated the deck and allowed us to put 80 more parking spaces than what was originally configured. I'm gonna go into the schedule as John was talking about. The schedule is based on many different factors, but most specifically, we are keeping our merchants and restaurants open throughout construction, we are maintaining parking in a close proximity to the services that they are providing spaces for, and because of that, what you're going to see is a series of hopscotch's, topscotching projects throughout the harbor. This next slide shows Phase 1 of the initial project. The construction projects are displayed in pink, the laid-out areas are displayed in yellow, and on the next slide, you'll see some purple areas as these areas get completed. Phase 1 of this project is to do some intersection work at Puerto Place and at Casitas, and the reason for that is those turn into our main entrances for the harbor, specifically, Casitas turns into the main entrance for the most of the construction. Phase 2 is the start of the parking deck. You'll see that the Phase 1 construction projects are now purple, Phase 2 has started and we're starting on the parking deck. We're gonna need that parking as we move into one of the latter phases of the project. About six months after this project starts, and I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you that if all goes as planned, this project will start sometime in the first quarter of 2015. If you follow along the bottom of the slides, you will see we have a scale that takes you to 2019 to the end of the project, so you can see the different phases of the project. Again, this is the start of the Phase 3A and 3B, which is the Dana Wharf project. At this point, the next phase, the parking deck is open and complete. This is a very important phase because now we have over 700 parking spaces that we can use throughout the duration of this project. So, we start in one of the major phases of the project, and this is the construction of Buildings 6, 7, 8, and 9, and this is the longest phase of the project. As we start on this phase, you'll see some other phases start to take place. The construction for the major portions of the buildings is still underway, and then we start improving the parking lots as we go. We start on the opposite side of the harbor and work in a counterclockwise direction. This is an important slide because you can see the purple area at the bottom, and then you see the white area, that's where the boat storage building is eventually going to go, but interim, that's gonna be used for dry boat storage. So now, we're gonna have the dry boat storage in the purple area on the bottom that's available, and in the white area in the top, about 250 boats this time. We're gonna continue around the harbor, improving the parking areas as we go in the next few phases. You see that one area is now done, and now we're gonna just work through the launch ramp area to complete the launch ramp area. We have a very small section right here because we're keeping the launch ramp open the entire time, so we have a very small section at the end which is gonna just be a little bit of asphalt work so there's still access. Now, this slide is very exciting for us because you're gonna see that almost, that the whole right side of the harbor is now, the east side of the harbor is now almost complete. It's at this phase, let me just go back, it's at this phase that we're almost done with Buildings 6, 7, 8, and 9, and the merchants that John was talking about, who are in these buildings right here, they will have about three months to move in and do their tenant improvements while we're finishing up this phase of the project, because the very next phase, which is very exciting for us because you see the whole east side of the harbor is now open and operational, this is the demolition of the buildings where the merchants are right now, where the El Toritos and those buildings through Mariners Alley and Mariners Village. So we start the demolition there, our whole retail area, Buildings 6, 7, 8, 9, and the Wharf are completely open and operating, and now we're just gonna continue in a clockwise direction to finish the parking areas. This is about three years into the project, we start on our coastal development permit for the dry boat storage building. So you see the dry boat storage building starts at about year four in this project, the construction of it. So now, we're working on both sides of the harbor, but we still have all that parking open, all of our merchants and restaurants open. We just continue through the project here, we're finishing up some latter phases of the parking lot, and now we start working on Golden Lantern. During some of the initial phases, when the parking deck is open, the entrance actually comes about halfway and you enter right here at the bottom. And I'll talk about this in some other slides, but now, we're still gonna be entering that direction, but we're now, we're finishing the upgrades on Golden Lantern. And this brings us to the most exciting part of all, this is the conclusion of the project about five years from when our initial start date is. John showed you the slide, but this is full build-out, this is full build-out with the dry boat storage building, and again, this, your approval that we're seeking today is not for the construction of the dry boat storage building, rather, it's the approval of the concept of it, and we'll be prepared in about three years, we'll be going to the coastal commission for that coastal development permit. Let's talk about landscaping. This drawing is actually out of our landscaping plan, and what I wanted to talk about is that we're maintaining the changes to the landscaping that we've experienced in the harbor over the last few years with the drought-tolerant landscaping and some of the architectural features, and these next two slides just show you, this is the landscaping plan for the Wharf, it shows you the trees and some of the pots and some of the planting and some bike racks and the other amenities that are gonna be in the harbor. We do have a new sign program, this is showing you what our new signs are gonna look like, there's some dimensions in there, show you the relation to the public as for some of our lights, and again, some more of our architectural features to the buildings, some of the signage, the blade signs, show you what some of the storefronts are going to look like. This is what we're asking for approval now, this is the interim project, all built out, you see there is no dry boat storage building, but at about year four, this is where we're going to be, and this is what we're seeking approval for today. And this is complete build-out, again, construction of that building is gonna start about four years after the initial construction starts. This is a architectural rendering of the dry boat storage building. We took a lot of time and effort to take this building and make sure that it didn't look like a giant shed. You see, there's all sorts of gables and roof features so we could break up the massing. I think it's, if anybody's familiar with dry boat storage buildings, if you've ever seen them, they're all over the east coast, there's not one around that looks like this, it's a very exciting building. Now, I'm gonna go into some view simulations. Now, these are computer-generated views that are based on the story pole analysis that we did last year, so they're based on actual heights of the proposed buildings with the actual finishes that we're proposing. This is a view of the festival plaza looking to the east, and the one thing that I'd like to point out is part of this plan and the configuration of the buildings and the stacking of the buildings and the peak roofs is all done to enhance views. There's views that are now available, that will be available when the project's done that are not there now. For example, we have a nice view looking down at Capo Beach right here. This is looking in the other direction, we have some views from the water's edge of the bluffs behind the buildings that aren't there today. This is a view of Dana Wharf looking to the west. Can you help me there, Lisa? Thank you. This is a view at the end of Golden Lantern. This is the second deck, and if you're riding at the harbor on the second deck of Golden Lantern, you've got this beautiful view of the harbor that's not there now. For those of us that go there all the time, and I know everybody in the audience and the commissioners and staff who are in the harbor quite regularly, there's no view of the water as you approach the harbor. Now, you're gonna have a view of the water as you approach the harbor. This is the second deck, and you'll be able to park at the second deck, if you're coming for dinner, going to some of the large restaurants, you can walk straight off, straight across from the second deck right into the restaurants. On the lower level, there's also a view that opens up just below this, and if you're going into some of the small retail shops or some of the coffee shops, you'll be able to park on the lower level or, again, walk straight across. All the large buildings have elevators, and there's ADA access throughout. This is a view from the same location looking to the east again, and that's the dry boat storage building in the background, and again, you can see Capo Hills, there's a shot of Capo Hills in between the buildings. Now, I was talking about the parking deck, and I was talking about where the entrance is gonna be. This depicts the entrance on the lower level, this one being the main entrance, and this is the interim entrance. What we have depicted here is the boater parking for the docks that serve right there, there's 72 spaces that are gonna be designated for boater parking on that side of the parking lot. The reason I have the shot is that when the project is complete, the boater parking's gonna move to the other side of the parking lot. The reason for that is that we have some parameters in the LCP that require us to keep the boater parking no more than 600 feet from the docks that they're serving. This diagram with the arcs show you that the furthest out arcs and the furthest out spaces are 600 feet from those two gates that they'll be serving. Of course, the boaters are gonna have opportunities to park wherever they want, but these are gonna be the designated spots for them, and the boaters will also have an opportunity to park. This is all boater parking here, and then again, there's all this new parking that's on this side. Let's talk about building heights for a second. As part of the LCP hearings that we had with the coastal commission, there's a lot of talk about building heights. The building heights are set in the LCP, and as part of the discussion, the coastal commission asked us to give a comparison or to, it was called the local character of the buildings. So what we agreed upon was to be able to use a half a mile arc from the harbor to do a comparison of the building heights, so that's what this red line depicts here, and you can see, just, I can't read, that's why I have this mic, 50-foot residential over here at the top of Cove Road, La Plaza at 42 feet, the Marriott at 55 feet, the Holiday Inn and the Pacific Coast Highway Bridge at 50 feet, and all those buildings are depicted in yellow. And here's Town Center with buildings at 40 feet. Our buildings are all depicted in red here, and you can see by the size of them, there's not really, comparison, the sizes are not that large. We're gonna look at some more view sims now. This view is on the corner across the street of Casitas Place, that's basically looking at the back of the bridge. That's basically looking at the back of the Bridge Restaurant. These views now, the second view, takes the buildings as proposed based on the story poles and imposes them in the picture. You can see that there are no new view obstructions, but in fact, there is right here a new view corridor that's opened up. This shot here is from Golden Lantern and Dana Point Harbor Drive looking to the east. And you can see again that there's, with the view simulations, with the buildings imposed, no new view obstructions, in fact, some view corridors that are opened up. This shot is on the opposite corner at the base of the stairs from Lantern Bay Park, and I'm really excited about this shot because as you look across the street where our monument sign is and our palm trees, all you can see is the parking lot and buildings. But in this next slide, you can see in the background the masts of the sailboats. In fact, if you go up a few steps on this, on your way up to Lantern Bay Park, you're going to have an excellent view of the harbor and the headlands beyond that's not there today. Now, this is an interesting shot. This is from Lantern Bay Park, but it's not from the top of the bluff because we're showing you the boat storage building. From the top of the bluff, you can't see the top of the boat storage building because of the terrain. So we came down on the bluff, there's a walkway that's halfway down. So we came down about halfway on the bluff, so you could see, no new view obstructions, but you can see the roof of the boat storage building. This is at the base of that bluff, basically at the bottom of the road on Dana Point Harbor Drive, looking the other direction. And again, you're looking for the buildings that are in the background in the pictures, and you can see that although there's not opening any new corridors, there's no view obstructions there. This is an interesting shot. This is the shot that was used to eliminate the second dry boat storage building. What's depicted there in red is the cell tower. That cell tower is 65 feet tall. In the next slide, you can see the boater storage building is in the shot there. But again, no new view obstructions. You still have these same views looking out towards the water. This shot again, Dana Wharf looking to the west, and this just showing you a shot of the new promenade and Festival Plaza. This is a great shot. This is from the top of Heritage Park, and this is the existing facilities now. And you see in the next slide, that's the brand-new, all the buildings, shops and restaurants. And again, no new view obstructions, no new corridors really, it's about the same view. This shot I really like. I'm excited about this shot whenever I see it. I have to point out here in the left, that is the horizon there. That's the ocean here, and it's a little gray in this shot. This is not a computer-generated graphic. But in the next shot with the shops and restaurants and the buildings, you see this incredible blue ocean view all the way through here. Your buildings end up over on this side in this area, and actually, that strategically-placed tree, we didn't plant it, that the buildings are right behind that. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here with my staff and consultants, and I'm available for questions. Thank you very much.
Who wants to start?
I have just a quick question from Brad. Can you go back to your very first slide that showed the very first items that you were planning to work on? If you go a little toward, I don't think it's this slide, but...
Is it one of the phasing slides?
Yeah, it's the first phase.
Funny. This one?
Right. If you go over to, yes, if you go over to the very first phase to the left there, where roughly the brig is, what's happening there? I missed that part of what you said is happening there.
Casitas will turn into the major entrance during construction. So the roadway improvement is going to be the installation of a temporary signal and enlarging, adding extra lanes on both sides, entrance and exit. So it's just improving that right there. So there's, should be no impediments to the boater access beyond Casitas into the hotel.
And also, the hotel will have access as well?
Absolutely.
Even though you're going to put a light there then for...
A light on the corner. The hotel has access. There will always be access through during the construction, but that is basically for installation of a light on the corner.
And down to the boater parking, where you use the badge to get through?
From the left turn into the commercial core, beyond that, no change.
Okay. All right. That was just a question I had, and I'll leave it open to others.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Thank you. I do have a question about the same intersection. So during construction, there's a temporary light, and then I understand from reading the supportive material that a traffic light warrant will be prepared to determine if that intersection needs a signal, correct?
There has been a traffic warrant. I'm not an expert on this, but there has been a traffic warrant, and there is a signal as part of the construction throughout the project. I believe there should, there will be another one to see if that light becomes a permanent light.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. And one thing about that particular intersection, which is currently not signaled, is that is a pedestrian link between Lantern Bay Park and the harbor. And so, was there any consideration to if a traffic light was not warranted in a permanent, if a pedestrian crossing light? Was that ever considered?
I know that a crosswalk is part of that, but I would assume that if, for some reason, they warn a light is not feasible, that I would imagine a crosswalk would remain. So I think what we would look for is some type of new system like they have in some of the crosswalks up the coast, push the button, the crosswalk becomes illuminated.
Okay. Because it's not easy to cross there with U-turns and...
We know.
All right. And then, my second question of you, and is the, you mentioned about the elevators. So I saw that there's an elevator in Building 6 that it's labeled "public access." And then, the other elevators within the various buildings going towards the west, they do have elevators, but they're service elevators, but...
No, there's public elevators and service elevators in all the buildings.
There are combined, so they're open to, the people can go into the building to get vertical access to down in those plazas.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, the other question I have to ask of you, will dogs be prohibited from Mariners Village and their Fiesta Plaza?
No.
As part of this development?
It's not, it's not considered at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Newkirk?
Brad, I have a quick question about the infrastructure improvements. This thing's been in play quite a while. We are proposing a lot of upgrades and changes to the wastewater management and outflow. December of this last year, there were some new, much more stringent regulations that came into play, and I'm assuming that everything that you will be doing will be meeting those more current, more stringent codes for...
All of our water quality management plans will be meeting the new codes, along with our stormwater prevention program are all up to date to meet the new and existing codes.
Thank you.
Chairman, I just have another add-on. Brad, tell me, when you finally settle on the boater parking in that, in the garage, in the parking structure, how are you going to designate those as for boaters only? Are you going to have some sort of badge, decal? How do I know when I come down there, you know, to use it, that it's not full of people shopping?
That's a great question. It's going to be signage, obviously, but the reason that we select, and the boaters will have, you know, right now, the boaters in the West Harbor have stickers, the boaters in the East Harbor have just card keys, but we'll have some type of system like that. Yet to be determined, but it'll be managed through our parking management plan. But the interesting thing that I didn't touch on in my presentation is that if we find that that plan for the designated boater parking is not working up to snuff, meaning that we're having that problem, we've placed it there because in that area, we can actually put a gate arm. We can put bollards in the gate arm, and it won't impede the flow in the parking deck.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just tag on to that parking management plan question? The new plan's putting a lot, a lot more parking close to Doheny. In theory, walking, there's more spaces with the deck.
Okay.
I mean, I'm assuming, you know, you want to maintain this is visitor-serving parking.
Absolutely.
And part of your plan will be monitoring and management to make sure that these aren't people that are parking in your lots, taking spaces from the retailers or restaurants and walking to the beach, to Doheny or to any other new commercial development that might be in the area.
I was trying to get to the slide, this one will work for me. You can see with the parking deck, the way the parking deck is being designed, just like with the boater parking on the lower level, that we have the opportunity and the option to control this with gate arms, a fee, whatever it may be. But we have this very large parking area here that will remain free and open. So the critical parking close to the commercial core, the retail, can be controlled if we decide to do something like that in the future, and then we'll always have this open deck, this open parking right here. For the, you know, the people that still want to come down, park, maybe they're going to walk through the harbor, they're not going to go in the commercial core, they want to walk along the sidewalk, go across the street to Heritage Park.
Thank you. Can I, can I just follow on that thought?
Okay.
Thanks, Brad, for... What I'm concerned about, since that's free over there by where the ultimate boat stack, dry storage is...
Here? Parking deck further over. This is all launch ramp and launch ramp parking and day use. So this parking here...
Do you have to pay to get in there?
Pardon me?
Will you have to pay to get in there?
Yes.
Okay. So surfers over at the beach are not going to park there for free?
No, sir. No, no, no. That's our launch ramp parking. The entrance to the launch ramp ends up being on this side. So this is going to end up being 93 spaces of dry boat storage on the hard, 400 spaces in the building, and this is all day-use launch ramp parking. So the only people that are going to be parking there are the ones that come through our gate, pay $10 to launch their vehicle, I mean, launch their vessel, and then, you know, the extra cars that come with them that are going on their boat. So that's boater parking.
Okay. But thank you very much for allowing me.
Oh, okay.
Vice Chair O'Connor?
Are you sure?
Your turn.
How will the storm drains that are being proposed, how will they improve water quality in the harbor?
That's a great question. I'm going to do my best to answer it. With the new system, we're going to have permeable paving, we're going to have water retention basins, we're going to have filters that before the water's dispersed into the harbor. The other thing is that right now, the water in the harbor basically runs off, you know, the buildings, to the sidewalks, over the gray wall, into the water. In the new system, it's all going to run the other direction. So it'll all go into some type of treatment system before it's discharged.
Okay. And then, will any current boat owners be losing their slips?
No. That's a simple no. Again, this project is not addressing the boat storage building nor the docks at this time. That'll be a separate CDP with the Coastal Commission. I was looking, it's interesting, I was looking at a presentation I did in 2008, it was the first presentation I did for the board of supervisors, about the slips. And at that time, we had proposed to lose 374 slips. But I made it clear that it was still a public project, and we were still taking boater's input, and we're going to still take information from the stakeholders. Today, and as part of our EIR process, it's been decided that we're not going to change the configuration. In fact, we're going to do a systematic replace and rebuild, which is going to keep the configuration basically the same. The LCP allows for us to lose up to 155 slips. That would be for ADA access. We're not getting any larger. We are getting a little larger. In the new plan, we can go up to about 32 feet average. Right now, we're about 29 foot average. So it's not that we're going to be evicting people, making larger slips. Everybody who's there will be there. On that, another note is that right now, for the last four or five years, we've been hovering at about 160 vacancies. So I would love to have the problem of having too many people, but right now, we don't, and we've had vacancies for quite a while, and I anticipate we're going to have vacancies for quite a while.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else want to... Okay, all right. Puerto Place.
Yes.
Let me pass that again. Why, why Puerto Place is so important to be moved and the loss of Embarcadero?
The Embarcadero splits the project, splits that area in half, and with the new configuration, the entrance and the exit on Puerto is important. We improved the intersection, and we actually widened Puerto Place. We make four lanes in and out, four lanes, two in, two out. We have a right turn lane that's a drive-through right turn lane, and when we signalize the intersection, you're not going to have that difficulty of exiting Puerto Place like you do on a busy summer day, or even getting in there on a busy summer day like you do today. There's going to be stop signs, there's going to be some more control, so it should be easier. You're going to have the boats coming out in their trailers, but the reality is, the influx of the boats on a, on a, on a busy morning when the bites happening, happens very early in the morning, and then the boats trickle out. You know, 4th of July happens very early in the morning, kind of like the motorhomes. So I don't see the conflict, you know, you're going to have boats coming in the morning, surfers coming in the morning, and that's about it. As everybody else is exiting and the beaches start picking up, so it's going to actually improve that entrance and exit at Puerto. And because of that, we don't need Embarcadero anymore. By removing Embarcadero, we have quite an area that ramps up to Dana Point Harbor Drive. By removing that and grading everything level, we get all those parking spaces for launch, day-use boaters.
Okay. You mentioned another word, motorhomes.
Did I say motorhomes?
Okay. I mean, motorhomes are a reality down there, so do you have some plan for them?
I'm sorry?
Motorhomes are a reality down there. What's your plan on motorhomes?
We have no plan for motorhomes. We don't, we have a 20-foot limit in the parking lots. We do let motorhomes into the launch ramp if they have a trailer and they launch their boat daily. But you can't stay overnight. So we don't have any overnight stays in the harbor.
Okay. Which is pretty much what it is now.
Yes. There's a campground at the State Beach right next door that takes motorhomes.
All right. Thank you.
Brad, another question. I think I heard from you a while back during your presentation that in the interim, when you're in the construction phase, that there's a chance that you might end up using the water department's land for some of the dry storage. If that's true, is there a, is there a comparable rate that they will get if they're over at that place to what you charge? Will it be more? Will it be less? And if they're over in the water while your construction's going on at the water property, will they be able to, will they be able to bring it in and launch it without paying the $10, or how is that going to work?
It depends on how the program is put together. We don't know how the management of that facility is going to be handled yet. That's up to the water district. If they have us manage it and handle it, it would be different. But if, if they're going to do it themselves, it's going to be their facility, and they're going to set the rates. I will tell you, I will go on record that I've already advised them that their rates can't, shouldn't be comparable to the rates at the water's edge because you're not on the water. So they should be offset so that the launch that they have to pay, the $10, is offset. So it should be a wash. I would anticipate it significantly less. I've already offered to help the water district whatever they need as far as getting their system set up, helping them, make some recommendations to them to set the rates. We've already kind of talked about it, but again, it hasn't been set yet. But I don't anticipate it being at the same rate as at the water's edge.
But a lot of those people will ultimately come back to the harbor, to waterside, probably because of the inconvenience of pulling their boat out on the Stone Hill, Stone Hill to Del Abispo, Del Abispo, through the light, down through, I mean, that's not the easiest thing versus going to Embarcadero and hooking onto your trailer and dropping your boat in the water.
No, it's not. And I'm a trailer boater also. My boat's at my house, and I come right down that route to go to the harbor. But we're working on a couple of other opportunities also, so I'm trying to stack up two or three different opportunities for dry boat storage, some very close, some not as close, some relatively far away, as people would say. But as you get further from the harbor, it's going to get less and less.
And, excuse me, one other question. Customers that come to Dick Simon and other sales organizations in the harbor that are generally over there, right by the wind and sea, right by where my boat is, will they still have access to those, to those boats for sale that are in O and N and all that particular area?
The, the commercial yacht brokers?
Yes, but I mean, people coming down to...
You'll always have access to the boats.
Okay.
Throughout the project, you will always have access to get to the gates, get to the boats.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Ah ha, Stephen. Okay.
You knew it.
You don't have any for John?
You're the man standing there.
The parking management plan. So, I think, you know, I think it has components like the shuttle, the high school parking lot, using parking lots more efficiently in the harbor, and I know that the county has had a lot of practice on managing its parking, and I see that. One thing, I noticed that on the, last year, during the Tall Ship Festival in September, it was a very hot weekend, and the Tall Ship Festival uses the Selva parking lot, and there weren't very many parking spaces. It was really, sort of a conflict, because it was a hot beach weekend, plus the festival. So, I would imagine that you would monitor that and come up with alternatives with your different parking lots that you can use if you see one strategy isn't working in the future with this parking plan.
That's something we work on fairly constantly, I mean, with, with events that are happening in the harbor, month after month, and we've had a lot of practice with them, you know, holidays are coming up, 4th of July, all bets are off, Labor Day, Tall Ships, we're always actively managing and moving merchants around, moving employees around, moving Catalina Express around, which are the first ones that we move around, they're easy, they're easy to contain, but as other areas become available or more controllable, we can put them into service.
And I noticed also that the parking management plan talked about bicycle parking racks. I would suggest a rope tow going up Golden Lantern. It'd really help with that bike ride down to the harbor.
There are a lot of electric bike places around now.
Just a quick tag on, onto the parking issue, just kind of for point of reference, how many current parking spots are in the harbor, and at build-out, how many will there be, within a reasonable range?
I'm going to have to ask my parking guy over here, John Cock, to give me those numbers. I'm going to say they're in the 4,000 range, and they're going to be in the 5,000 range, but he can give you the exact numbers.
We get a 20 to 25 percent increase in parking. And maybe you could answer while John's looking. You know, there's, there's a handful of racks that hold six bikes.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's a lot of people that ride with 10 or 15 bikes down the highway. Is it possible to add more racks as, if it becomes evident that it's becoming a more destination, is that something that-
Oh, absolutely. Anything is possible, as long as we have the space, we're allowed to do it according to ALCP, we have the money to do it, which is, that's the smallest part of it, but if we see a need, we can, we can install, that's not a problem.
Has there been any, any thought about bike lockers?
We've had discussion about them, but they're, we haven't put them into the plan yet. Kind of when we talk to our operators, we talk about whether that's viable. Unfortunately, I have experience with bike lockers in other areas, and they've turned into lockers for everything except for bikes, and I'm afraid that that may happen also.
Yeah, I think, you know, Santa Monica has a pretty good system with some bike lockers for commuters, and I'm just thinking, you know, with, a lot of people live on a boat, it might become their sec, their mode of transportation on the land side.
It may be.
A place to park their bike.
I, I had my experience in San Francisco, and there were, they were very, very small condos.
True. Thank you.
Okay. Is this the last chance? Did you get those numbers, John?
Oh, he's looking, oh, sorry.
You want harbor-wide or the commercial core?
Harbor-wide, that's where we're increasing.
Well, we're, we're increasing by 545, in the commercial core, so, total in the harbor, it's going to increase by 545, because there's no construction that's happening anywhere else. Okay? Thank you very much.
Are you going to stay with us? Are you going to try to sneak in?
Yes. Well, I'm not done.
Okay, okay, all right, good. All right. This would be when we would open the public hearing, I'm wondering if people want to break, or we want to continue.
Five to ten minutes.
Five or 10-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. Three or four in a row, and also, our toxicity is very huge, as I said, if we cannot, if we cannot reenter it, we're going to have to.
Try it.
I've got a, I'm going to have a little line. I also can't reach my legs. She said I could be throwing. I'm kidding, I'm, I'm, first 20 minutes were brutal, I'm starting to ramp up. I was going to ask you something, okay, so, so when we come back, what, we're going directly to, um-
Yeah.
The hot tub here, okay. I have an open date, okay. And I'll give, and then I'll give them my, my little spiel. Same thing, I'm trying to think, but there's three people in here. I would think it was three.
Yeah, that's what you want? I think so.
It makes it a lot faster. All right.
They're going to cut them off if they go too long.
It reminds me, I guess, to tell them, they don't have three minutes, okay, I forgot about that, they'll forget. He loved chairs, he was a dad. Get away with things. I was, I couldn't believe how rocky I was when it started, I was getting better. What are you, what's a public area? What's supposed to do? Are we, what are we waiting for? Ready? Uh, I'm not going to. Yeah. Can somebody go outside and call any, if there's anybody that wants to come in, can somebody who's close to the door just open the door and say, "Come in now"?
Stay out.
Everyone come in, there's plenty of seats. Okay, I'm reconvening, reconvening the meeting, and we are going to start with, we're going to start, okay.
With the speaker slips?
Our speaker slips, and so, this is what we would like to do, is you will have three minutes to speak, and you'll get binged along the way when it gets closer to time, and we are suggesting that, because this podium- Uh, and we are suggesting that, because this podium is rather large, uh, a way for this to move faster, for those of you who are, who are here and listening, uh, we're going to ask, we're going to call people up three at a time, and you can just line up by the podium there, one, two, three, and then we'll call the next, the next three, which should make it a little easier for people. And, uh, the other thing which people may not like is, is on your speaker slip, if, if we're not able to read your name, uh, what we're going to do is put that at the back of the list. So if you think at this time that perhaps you've done a little squiggle, uh, instead of like J-O-H-N, then you might wanna go, go up now and change your speaker slip, okay? Any, any questions on that? Right, so I'm now going to open the public hearing, and Vice Chair O'Connor.
I will, uh, call you, I'll call three names, and, um, as the, uh, Madam Chair said, please line up. And I'll try to go, uh, in favor and against, and we'll rotate. And also, uh, just a reminder, we don't, uh, we don't, we're not entertaining here, so please don't clap or whistle or boo or anything like that. It's, it's supposed to be a professional meeting here, so, um. All right, so the first speaker, uh, is John Hicks. Second speaker is William Byrd. And then, the third speaker will be Diana, and you'll have to help me here, Silo, Silopolis. No. Okay, well, we'll come back to, to that, uh, put her at the back, and we'll go with, uh. Oh, she is here, okay, great, okay. Three minutes, go ahead, say your name and city of residence, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is John Hicks, I live in the city of Laguna Niguel. And my wife and, um, Wanda and I, along with my son, have owned and operated the Harbor Grill Restaurant in the Dana Point Harbor for the past thirty years. Um, I'm here to urge you to approve the CDP as submitted. As John noted, um, it has been over fourteen years since revitalization, revitalization planning began. And we did not, when it started to plan, I had a full head of hair. So it's been quite some time, I've gone through a lot of meetings, as has been stated. And it's been nearly five years since we've, we've been, um, to receive approval from the Coastal Commission by unanimous vote, uh, for the plan to be, uh, continue on. And it's difficult, uh, overall, to satisfy all the stakeholders, but this plan accommodates many of the stakeholders' concerns. You can't please everyone. Uh, but I think the county has done an outstanding job, um, as you saw the plan, and I think it's a beautiful plan. I think it'd be great for Dana Point, the city of Dana Point, the county of Orange. And I will finish by saying that, in four days Supervisor Pat Bates will be delivering the state of the county address. And I think would be, uh, very appropriate and, and terrific for her to be able to stand up and say that the Dana Point Harbor revitalization has been approved, CDP. And once again, I urge you to approve the plan as submitted, thank you.
Please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is William Byrd, the owner of Capo Beach Watercraft. Relocated waterfront in the Embarcadero Marina, adjacent to the boat launch in Dana Point Harbor. I previously provided you with a brief letter of introduction, a brochure, and a business card. And I was wondering, did all five Commissioners receive that? Thank you. Uh, we are a family, own and operate a jet ski, seadoo, and kayak rental business. We will celebrate our thirty year anniversary in Dana Point Harbor next February. We have an excellent reputation, excuse me, relationship with the county of Orange Vintage Marina Partners, and are, are an active member of the Dana Point Harbor Association. Each year approximately ten thousand Orange County's residents and visitors use our services and facility to enjoy time on the water. Uh, to the point, OC Dana Point Harbor Director Brad Gross has intentionally misled California Coastal Commission and others by failing to communicate to them the existence of our business. The CDB, CDP presented to you tonight contains the first documents prepared by OC Dana Point Harbor Department that actually depict our business location and a, and I quote, "relocated jet ski rental." If you could refer to the CDP application section, project plans, and exhibits, I don't know if you can bring the PowerPoint up, that section or not, but I'll, I'll finish here and then if we can. Number one, it's site plan and architectural plans, and I have a question for Mr. Gross, and it would be, is this relocated jet ski rental building, as depicted on page five, intended to be the relocated, relocated office for Capo Beach Watercraft? And secondly, after careful review of the scheduled one-year construction of the stack building, it appears all the docks needed to facilitate renting our watercraft are scheduled to be demolished and replaced at the same time. The construction of the new docks could easily be done in two phases, allowing Capo Beach Watercraft to relocate their watercraft in the immediate area as necessary. This is a necessary reasonable request and most certainly easily achievable, as we only require forty linear feet of dock space to effectively operate. The proposed plan, uh, should be revised by OC Dana Point Harbor Department and project dimensions to reflect one that allows Capo Beach Watercraft the same ability to continue operating as will be enjoyed by all the other existing Dana Point Harbor merchants and businesses. Please deny an approval in concept for a dry stack storage building until proper planning is submitted that includes reasonable temporary and permanent relocation for Capo Beach Watercraft. I appreciate your time and welcome your questions and concerns, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Diana Silopolis, also known as Diana Poole, it's for business purposes, it's a little easier. My family and I live in Dana Point, and we've owned the White Pelican Gallery in the harbor for nineteen years. I'm just here to encourage you to approve the CDP tonight. Thank you for your time and thank you for your efforts in examining all the documentation.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Bruce Hayman, followed by Donna Calas, and Ray Ergas.
Bruce Hayman, San Juan Capistrano. It says Mister Chair, I guess I should say Madam Chair. Vice Chair, Commissioners, staff, and members of the public. My name is Bruce Hayman, and I'm the President and Advocacy Group, Boaters for Dana Point Harbor. Since two thousand and six, I've represented and organized boaters trying to move the revitalization plan forward in a way that does not damage recreational boating in Dana Point Harbor. Before you can issue a coastal development permit, you must ensure that all five hundred and one megabytes of the application are consistent with the LCP. There are several important areas that do not. My colleague, Mr. Ergas, will bring to your attention the lack of required preservation of dry boat storage within the harbor at all times, including during construction. Section fourteen point six of the city's implementation plan requires inclusion of a baseline study. We have identified seven material issues with the study and have so informed the Coastal Commission staff. We've included a copy of the report for you and would be happy to answer any questions you have. Lastly, I would like to cover a boater issue that is very important to us. As the county has chosen to focus on the land side of the development and work on the dock replacement last, we and the Coastal Commission worked very closely to ensure that the landside CDPs would not be issued eliminating important and viable alternative solutions for the waterside design. The Coastal Commission required the county to inform the Commission of the likely slip configuration before the LCP hearings, which the county did with a proposed plan of three point five oh and commensurate loss of two hundred and nine slips. In our work with the Coastal Commission, we jointly developed a solution that would allow the county to achieve their goals of updating the docks, meeting the new standards, increasing the number of larger slips, and achieving zero slip loss. However, the only way to achieve that, all of those goals, is to build out slips in new areas in the harbor, like the east anchorage. We've articulated in our handout the sections of the Coastal Commission, that the Coastal Commission put in the LUP and IP to ensure zero slip loss. For example, section twelve point five is the zero slip loss goal, and the slip build out in new areas. Section twelve point five J is the ability to build out in anchorages and that adequate land is set aside to park such build outs. And lastly, section fourteen point two, section I, states that the first landside CDP must demonstrate that the required land area has been reserved for this higher priority use. This CDP does not set aside any land to park a build out in the east anchorage that will be required, likely be required for zero slip loss. Please send this application back to the county for correction, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, Prime and Commissioners, my name is Donna Calas, and I live in St. Clemente. My family owns Dana Wharf Sport Fishing and Whale Ratching. We were the first business to open in nineteen seventy-one, and my father, Don Hanson, has been working tirelessly to, um, grow our business since nineteen seventy-one, and we love Dana Point. I'm here to represent my family, my employees, and all the people that I know that live Dana Point, and to tell you that we would very much like you to approve the CDP that you're hearing tonight. The plan, as currently proposed, calls for much needed improvements to the aging facilities. Since it's beginning in nineteen seventy-one, we lacked a very much needed parking structure. The plan will start off building this much needed improvement, and we commend OC Dana Point Harbor for coming up with a plan that stages its construction so that we all may stay in business. Um, the construction will go on while the merchants and sport fishing is all going to be open. And that was a huge, um, thing for us, and we commend them for making that happen. Uh, we have waited very, very long for this plan. I personally have been waiting, um, and working on it since two thousand, and that's a long time. Um, I just wanna commend you all for reading the plan, it's very complexed, and thank you for your time and energy on this project, please pass it, thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to give you input, excuse me, on this permit application. My name is Ray Ergas, I've been a boater in Dana Point for thirty years, and I'm a resident of St. Clemente. Uh, one of the things my colleagues at Boaters for Dana Point Harbor and I have learned over the last few years is that the Coastal Act is not self-enforcing. It's the responsibility of the citizenry to bring the issues that are, um, before you to the proper authorities, and that's why I'm here tonight. We believe that the city, as the permitting agency, has a responsibility to ensure that the requirements of the LCP are met before you approve that CDP. And thus you should return this applicant, this, um, application to the county with a request for appropriate revisions. I'm gonna talk about one specific item, and in a letter to the commission that you have, we quote specific parts of the implementation plan that require the county to maintain land storage for at least four hundred and ninety-three boats at all times. This includes in the section on commercial development phasing, that includes that period and the five years that the commercial core will be under construction. Yet on appendix M of the CDP application, the construction management parking plan, which is different than the actual parking plan, the county states that it will not, that will explicitly not provide this space in the harbor. This is on the last page, number twenty-nine, near the bottom of the page in a spreadsheet. Instead, they remove boats off-site, presumably out of the harbor. Their plan can be described as removing some of the boats all of the time, and all of the boats some of the time during construction. A plan for more offsite storage of boats is a great idea, but it's not a replacement for the existing priority uses, use spaces in the harbor. We believe that chapter fourteen point two of the implementation plan forbids this, and that it could lead to a long-term loss of affordable recreational boating resources in violation of the Coastal Act. If funding for the boat barn were to be delayed or denied, there may not be enough space left to satisfy the LCP requirements after the construction of the commercial core. We ask that you ensure that after the many long discussions, meetings, and hearings that we've all been to, and that have finally led to the certification of the local coastal plan, that the landside, of the landside of this redevelopment project follow the rules that the applicant, the county, actually agreed to. Thank you.
All right, we have Terry Walsh, followed by Douglas Helm or Hein, and then Rod Howard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Terry Walsh, resident of Dana Point. And I'm here to urge you to pass the plan tonight as submitted. I think it's a good plan, I think it's one that's well thought out. Clearly, if the number of hearings has anything to do with it, it's extremely well thought out. During the construction, certainly there's gonna be some disruption, I can certainly expect that. As a resident, I use the harbor frequently. In my retirement, I go there weekly, and I know during the construction it'll be a little bit of a mess, but I'm prepared to deal with it, 'cause just like our town center, uh, the long-term goal is much better. When I first moved to Dana Point a long time ago, I noticed that the harbor buildings were falling down. Uh, some of them had actually fallen down. I was there one day when a structure of the roof on the patio cover fell down. I think it's time that we move forward, I think we've had enough hearings, I think we've had enough government overview, and I urge you to pass this so we can begin the process of reconstructing the harbor, and I think we'll all be extremely pleased with it. The town center will be completed, the harbor will be completed, and we're gonna have a wonderful, wonderful town we all love called Dana Point, thank you.
Hi, my name's Doug Hein, thirty-seven year resident of Dana Point, I've had a boat in the harbor since nineteen seventy-nine. This current plan, I hear we're gonna get five hundred and forty-five parking places, and we're gonna add thirty-five thousand square feet of retail and commercial restaurant space. Somehow, we're adding retail and commercial space, and we're not getting enough parking. We already know there's a parking problem. The county yard can be moved, there's other things that we can do to increase the parking without building all this commercial space. The building height restriction that you honored, and I appreciate you doing that for that hotel at the Doheny Project, why are we building buildings, and why are we giving a variance now for building heights? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Rod Howard, and I have lived in Dana Point since nineteen eighty, thirty-four years. During that time, I've had three, I've gone through three boats that have all been moored in the harbor. I've enjoyed it very, very much. I've spent a lot of time in the harbor, probably down there every day. And, uh, I've also patronized the businesses there, uh, and I've also seen the damages due to dry rotten termites. And I also saw the beam that fell down and almost hit a lady with a stroller, uh, which was a pretty scary thing. So, um, I think it's time to take action on this revitalization now. I'm in favor of it, and I hope it gets approved tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next three speakers are Harriet Proctor, followed by Alan Wickstrom, and then it looks like Anthony Prin something. Princhiato.
I'm Harriet Proctor, I reside in Landon Bay, number thirty-two, right off Golden Lantern. I reside in Lantern Bay Number 32, right off Golden Lantern. I've owned a property for 27 years. I want to know if the public parking can be moved east more, a little bit that way, so that the beautiful view is not impaired when looking down toward the harbor. I hope you'll consider my request. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. My name is Alan Wickstrom. I'm a resident of Dana Point and business owner as well. And I'm here tonight as a board member of the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce and Chair of the Chambers Government Affairs Committee. I'm here today speaking for the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce, which represents over 400 business members in and around Dana Point. The Dana Point Chamber has been a strong supporter of the harbor revitalization in the past and tonight urges the Planning Commission to please approve the coastal development permit application so that we can continue to see our desire of a revitalized harbor come to fruition. We feel that revitalization is crucial to address the old antiquated infrastructure. We clearly recognize the economic impact the Dana Point Harbor brings to the area. It's a signature destination point in South Orange County, allowing people from all walks of life to enjoy the recreational use of the harbor. In addition, the OC Dana Point Harbor is a vital source of jobs and small businesses to thrive. The plan you have today represents a comprehensive vetting process that includes input from the variety of stakeholders who use the harbor. This plan offers the best compromise available to address the wants and desires of these stakeholders. This plan represents the harbor, sorry, represents the harbor intended for a variety of uses for the public to enjoy. The harbor and the county has done an outstanding job in providing thoughtful solutions to address parking issues, view corridors, public access, and other environmentally sensitive issues. The OC Dana Point Harbor has high expectations for its future on the part of several diverse groups. The plans in front of you tonight coincides with the general plan to create a bright future for the OC Dana Point Harbor and the city of Dana Point. The Dana Point Chamber of Commerce urges you to please approve the coastal development permit application tonight. And I have just a couple of copies for the record as well. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your service. It's a lot of work and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tony Princiato. I live in Lantern Bay Villas, a resident of Dana Point proudly since 2008 and lucky enough to have a slip down in the marina. I want to be very clear. I am very supportive of the renovation of the harbor area. It's overdue. I think it'd be vital to the revitalization of Dana Point and make us more of a destination area than we currently are. However, I believe that we also need to respect the building heights that are part and parcel of Dana Point. Though not stuck on 35 feet, I do begin to question when buildings 50 and 60 feet effectively will be in the harbor. As we know, up to 25% of the roof area can exceed the limitation listed in the CDP for the air conditioning units and any other perturbances over and above the height. Now, I also, as a resident of Lantern Bay Villas, have a dog in this fight and that I'm going to lose a considerable part of my view. Although there have been 125 meetings that have been well attended at various points, I'm a little concerned that we have not been heard adequately about the building heights. As a matter of fact, just before the CDP was approved, there was an amendment to actually increase height for one of the buildings to enable a tower for the harbor department itself. Whether or not that's a good idea or a bad idea, we have to be very careful not to trash the height limitations. I am from an area on the other side of the country and in a New England village, I've never seen anything even approaching these heights. So although private views are secondary to public views, and that should be the case, I do believe that this town has done a tremendous job with your zoning, as evidenced by the many different decisions that were made this evening. And I would very much request that although it's important to approve a harbor revitalization, we should be asking the county to review and moderate the heights of the buildings themselves. I am for the additional 30,000 square feet of retail space. I think it's critical. But the volume ceilings, I believe, are a bit excessive and if you brought them down by five or 10 feet, that would make a major difference for many of the private views in the area. I thank you for your public service and I wish you well in your decision-making. Thank you.
All right. We have Ted Olson, Richard Gardner, and Pete Hammer.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ted Olson. I'm a resident of Mission View Hill and I've been visiting the harbor since 1973, towing boats, launching boats, and now I'm lucky enough to have a boat on a slip in the harbor. This comes down to money. It's all about is money. We have 35,000 square foot of building increased by 35,000 square feet of building. We're adding 545 extra parking spaces. Who hasn't experienced not enough parking? We squeeze them down, we make them compact spaces, people don't have those sized cars. It's a fact. We're squeezing a lot in, a little space. Dana Point Harbor has a cliff on one side, water on the other. You can only do so much unless you squeeze other people out. So if you want more parking at a restaurant, you take it from a boater. You want more parking for Catalina Express, you take it from the boaters. It's real simple. If this project goes like it is planned to do, it's going to be in competition with your town center project. There's only so many pocketbooks that come down the street and it's a lot of competition. Unfortunately, what happens in these developments, you get a lot of people in it at the first moments and then people leave because they can't pay the rent, they can't, they don't have the profit. Then we start having empty, empty buildings such as the Porchacol in Los Angeles. Let's talk about the boat barn. Boat barn does not replace a trailer boat lot. You can't put a trailer in a boat barn. So you have 400 boats that are now on trailers. What do you do with the trailers? How do people get their boat from the boat barn and take it to someplace else? You can't do it. You want to take the boats out of the harbor and put them temporarily someplace else? A lot of those trailers down there are not street legal. They sit there, all they do is hold the boat and they go from here to there. If we make these people take it to San Juan, they have to buy a truck. They have to make the trailer street legal and they increase a lot of traffic and traffic has not been counted. You add here, you add here, you add here, pretty soon you get a lot of cars. You have to look at the whole thing together. Now it makes sense. Piecemeal, this is approved, this is approved, this is approved. And as I say, when you get to the end, traffic is a real issue. Parking's an issue, traffic's an issue, and the quality of life is an issue. One person told me, one young man told me, when he saw the buildings in the development area, he said, "Well, there goes date night with my wife. We'd like to go eat here. We'd like to go over to the ice cream, the scoop deck and have ice cream. Can't do that anymore, so I'll go in the same building. We'll just take an elevator. That'll be our date night." That's not quality of life in Dana Point as we know it. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm Richard Gardner from Capistrano Beach and I've been involved in the harbor since it was built. And my first recollection of the harbor was while I was surfing in San Clemente and I could hear them dropping the rocks in 19, I think it was 63. Anyway, I'm concerned about a couple of things that are maybe not as important. One thing would be the architectural theme of the harbor, which I have the document that was used back in 69 as a design for the harbor and the architectural theme listed here is, "The object of the design of any and all structures of the Dana Point Harbor is to enhance the environment of the harbor by providing a unified and distinct Dana Point character. While meeting the needs of the Leesee and providing the needed service to the public, structures erected at Dana Point Harbor should reflect an atmosphere of warmth, informality, and hospitality that has been a part of this area since the days of the Spanish ranchos and the Yankee sealing ships. Rough rugged natural materials with a touch of hand craftsmanship shall be reflected in all designs. Modern materials such as aluminum plastics and enamels and steels should be used in a subdued or restrained manner." And it goes on to, in a sentence or two, to say that "The stress of the design should be placed upon the use of natural materials whose beauty will be enhanced with age. Materials upon which the action of sun, rain, and salt spray will improve the structural appearance." So these guys were really right on with the design and they designed a harbor that lasted for over 40 years and when you hear things like, "Oh, the beam was rotting and it fell", well, that's a maintenance issue. Nothing lasts forever unless maybe the pyramids. So the question is, what is the architectural theme of the Dana Point Harbor now? What is this new architectural theme? And I don't think we could say it. I saw the little rocks out there, which are very popular. They're all over the place in homes now. You stack those little, with a little cement behind it. That's the theme, I guess. So I think we need to look at that. One other thing I wanted to say is that the boat storage building, there are other options that you haven't been seeing, that have not been presented. For instance, you know that temporarily boats will be stored on the 30-acre property in the city of Dana Point. That's a very good location where long-term storage could occur, freeing up vital space in the harbor. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name's Pete Hammer. I'm an 18-year resident here in Dana Point. My better half, Willa Porter, and I use the harbor just about every day. In over a 12-month period of time, we've used just about all the amenities. We're here because we're in favor of the commercial core project or our harbor revitalization plan. We recommend the Planning Commission approve the plan as submitted. The benefits to the city, its residents, all the restaurateurs, our shopkeepers are self-evident and it further enhances the draw of tourists here to Dana Point. The facelift for our day, we think, is long overdue and we think that time is now in terms of action. So again, we would recommend you proceed post haste with the approval of the plan as submitted. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next three speakers are from the Dana Point Boaters Association. They wanted to all speak together, apparently. James Lempel, Stephen Carpenter, and Alan Johnson.
We'll speak in order.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you and good evening. My name is James Lempel. I am Vice President of the Dana Point Boaters Association. I'm also a lifelong Dana Point resident and boater. That would be 44 years. I haven't heard anyone longer than that yet. On behalf of my association, I wish to start by emphasizing that we do support revitalization. We generally support revitalization. Our harbor needs it, boaters want it. Yes, we absolutely lament the loss of boater resources in what is predominantly disproportionately a revitalization of the commercial elements of our harbor, but we are not obstructionists and we're not here at this stage to kill the plan. However, we are requesting additional information and some essential refinements to the plan before it's allowed to proceed to construction. First of all, financing this project may not be your foremost concern so long as the county pays for it. We wish to express our distress that the county has yet to reveal officially how they plan to pay for harbor revitalization. Their reserves are at least $100 million short of predicted cost. How does the county plan to close the gap? More importantly, where do they plan to recover their investment? We need to know that our 3,000-plus recreational boaters will not pay a disproportionate share of a predominantly commercial project. There must be an official, public, and fair finance plan that details the impact on all state stakeholders, boaters and merchants alike. Next, we understand that your consideration of the dry stack storage building is of concept only, that jurisdiction of approval of the CDP resides with the California Coastal Commission. Yet the storage facility is an integral, it is essential to redevelopment of the commercial core, which cannot proceed without a resolution, excuse me, a resolution to the loss of real estate for dry boat storage. As you know, the Coastal Commission obligates the county to maintain capacity for no fewer than 493 boats. So your approval of the commercial core CDP demands your satisfaction that the barn is appropriate mitigation for dry boat storage or that comparable alternative is in place. Further, for a practical matter, the storage building will radically alter how current embarkader tenants use and store their boats. They want to keep their boats on their trailers, portable and ready to tow off to other destinations. But this planned building won't allow trailers. Do these boaters discard their trailers or do they pay extra to store them elsewhere? And boaters like to tinker. These boaters, do these boaters, I'm sorry, on any given day, you will find plenty of boaters in the embarkader yard fixing, improving, or simply admiring their boats, but this building won't allow it. These sorts of boat storage facilities appeal to an entirely different demographic of boater, ones who don't mind not having a trailer, perhaps don't even want a trailer. They want the convenience of calling ahead to have their boat dropped in the water and let someone else put it away when they're done. And we welcome these boaters to our harbor, but not at the expense of displacing boaters that are there now. These boaters have made their position clear. They don't want the new building, but if this building must proceed, there must also be a finalized dependable plan to maintain nearby on-trailer affordable dry boat storage. And please don't forget too, that this building is estimated to cost $30 million. $30 million to store approximately 250 more boats than if the property were left as a surface lot, even with its reduced footprint. $30 million for 250 boats out of 3,000 in our harbor. That's $120,000 per boat, most of which don't cost a fraction of that. And we've asked before, who pays for it? I'm out of time, I'm going to defer to my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Commissioner, Commissioners and staff. My name is Steve Carpenter. I am over a 50-year resident of Capistrano Beach. I'm a member of the Dana Point Boaters Association and a Director of the Association. I'm here tonight in support of the revitalization with the association, but we do have some concerns with the proposed, two of the proposed sections. And within two of those proposed sections, we've submitted to the Secretary here for pass out its documents listing specifically our concerns within Sections K, which is the parking management plan, and Section M is the construction management plan. And obviously, three minutes would be not enough time, so it's just going to be a highlight here. We respectfully submit the areas of concern with the CDP application. We truly do appreciate your work and diligence that the City Planning Commission has put into this, excuse me, put into the reviewing of this huge CDP project. We do look forward to hearing back from you regarding our concerns. Just a couple of the main concerns is one of the items is the dry stack storage building. On Table 10, within Section K, which is on page 60, there's inconsistencies within the report. We do know that they are going to supply 495 spaces that is for dry boat storage, but within this report, it's down to 488 and there are variations and misstatements along the way that collectively, they're all coming up with the same figures. And those are a concern to us because we want to make sure that the 493 minimum boat spaces are going to be available there for dry storage. One of the other areas is the boatyard. We know that the parking spaces that were allotted for that, our concern is where they came up with those amount of parking places that are going to be allotted for the shipyard because it's the 5,000 square foot building, but yet you will need one parking place for every space that's taken up for a boater that has this boat in there that they are going there in order to do the repairs and maintenance on the boat themselves. So the minimal amount of spaces that are provided at the shipyard is something that needs to be reviewed. The other item is the parking deck. The additional parking spaces which came up was a design that came from the Dana Point Boaters Association. By changing the size and shape of that, we met with OC Dana Point Harbor and boaters groups in order to become an elongated, narrower size for the deck. By doing that, provided better access for the long tramp and an additional 225 spaces. What we did- What we did agree to in the meeting was that those sort of spaces would be allowed for day use boaters and not a four-hour limitation. Again, we thank you for your time.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Alan Johnson. I'm a resident currently of Tribuco Canyon. I first started enjoying Dana Point in 1964 as I watched them build the harbor. And so while sitting on my surfboard, I did see the rocks drop in there as it was all in development. Dana Point's been part of my life and my family's life for a lot of years, so what happens here is very important to me. As the CDP stands now, I'd urge you to not approve it, even though I am for the redevelopment plan, because it's missing the mark on some very critical areas. Unfortunately, it will, as it stands now, a lot of trailer boaters will be displaced from the harbor. That's where my personal interest is at this time. I do have a boat in the Embarcadero, which I use on a regular basis. I think many things need to be reconsidered and reviewed and refined before it is approved. And I don't want to belabor the points that have been made by the previous people, but I would urge you to not approve it at this time. It's not quite ready for prime time. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two speaker slips left. If I've forgotten anybody, please let me know. Jim Miller and Wayne Rayfield. And if anyone, is there, did I forget anybody? All right.
I think we're good.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for all that you do. And my name is Jim Miller. I'm a resident of Dana Point and the owner of Coffee Importers in the Dana Point Harbor for the past thirty-five years. I'm the president of the Harbor Merchants Association and president of the Dana Point Civic Association. I'm also here to represent the group called Dana Point Harbor Now this evening, with sole purpose to see the harbor revitalization completed. I believe the CDP submitted meets all requirements of the LCPA, and I support the approval of the CDP for the harbor revitalization tonight. I've been to every single meeting that ever held in this harbor since 1997, and I estimate it's well over 150 meetings. And never in my wildest dreams did I think this would take over sixteen years to get to this point tonight. I started as a member of the Dana Point Harbor Revitalization Task Force, and my first meeting was in January of 1998. Then in October of 2009, as a representative of Dana Point Harbor Now, I presented over 2,100 signed index cards in support of the revitalization. I also blessed over 100 people from Dana Point area to this California Coast Commission hearing to get the unanimous approval from the California Coast Commission for this plan. One of those sixteen years that the harbor revitalization has been vetted by the general public, by the harbor merchants, boaters associations both in the harbor and out, the Orange County Board of Supervisors, the County of Planning Commission, your own planning commission here, the Dana Point City Council, and the final approval of the revitalization plan by the California Coast Commission. Everyone is at their say and has time to finalize this and get the revitalization started. I suggest there be no more delays. I have read, and I'm sure you have read, comments from boaters and local residents why the plan should not move forward, yet over the sixteen years, these have been the same issues that have been addressed by all these commissions, and here we are tonight, hearing them all over again. With the founding unanimous approval of the LCPA by the California Coast Commission, it's time to begin the revitalization of Amble Harbor with your yes vote tonight. When I attended the Hoonan Hotel project, there were thirty opposed and three supported, and tonight I can see we have a lot of people that are in support of this plan. The harbor has a tremendous community support with well over 150 letters in support, as I think you have, and all the speakers in favor of the reasons why, that tonight, Alan's favor of seeing this plan move forward. I think the yes vote would be the right vote for the CDP tonight. Thank you for all you do, Commissioners. Appreciate the hard work. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Wayne Rayfield, and my wife and I have been property owners in Dana Point since the mid-sixties and residents of paradise for twenty years. We've also been boarders for that period of time. And I'm here tonight in support of approving the CDP, and I'm actually wearing two hats. So let me start with the hat on, that is a resident. And I've been involved with the harbor revitalization since 1998, like Mr. Miller. And one issue that, to me, is vital that hasn't been very well addressed tonight is the issue of water quality, ocean water quality. And those of you who know me know I am full of it on that very point. And moving ahead with the CDP will dramatically improve ocean water quality in and around the harbor as well as outside the harbor. But as Mr. Miller and others are pointing out, this has been going on in an extremely long time, and I would urge you to act positively tonight. Like, for a moment, to put on my other hat as president of the Board of South Coast Water District. And just so there's no misunderstanding, I would like all of you to know that the Board is unanimous in providing temporary and long-term storage, dry storage for trailer-able boats. And we have a project underway, even as we speak here tonight, to have that project online by the time any of the trailer-able boats are displaced from the harbor. So again, I hope you will approve the CDP, and I want to add our personal thanks for all of your public service.
That's it. Thank you very much. Is there anybody who wanted to be heard and feels they haven't? If so, if not, then I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commissioners. Going once, going twice? Okay. Who wants to start off?
Mr. Rayfield, I have a question for you. Excuse me. Commissioner, earlier before you were here this evening, the water quality did come up, and there was a discussion of that. And we were questioning Brad Gross about the possibility of the water district's property being for storage of boats. And the question is, is that would that be managed by the harbor, or would it be managed by South Coast Water?
Well, there's a theory, Anton, and there's a theory as to which is by someone experienced in managing that kind of an operation. And we have not decided on that yet, really, meaning the Board, but I think that's where we are leaning, to really hire somebody, a professional in that field, to manage that storage operation and manage the transfer of trailers and boats in and out of the property.
I guess the reason I'm asking the question, it would seem to me that there has to be very, very close cooperation between the harbor and the water district in terms of making sure that the prices, that the people that are displaced from the harbor for the time being during the construction, that it's financially doable for the people who are displaced, because they have to bring their boat back in and pay their way back into the harbor to launch. So that's why I would urge, in my opinion, that the harbor and you work very closely together to make sure those displaced boaters have some sort of preference and the pricing possibly be commensurate with what they've got now in the harbor.
We have been working with the harbor for years on this, and your point is well-taken, and we have been pursuing that. And I think it will take a concentrated, coordinated effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rudiger?
Well, I do have a couple of questions I'd like to start with, but I would like to hear from my fellow Commissioners also and be able to maybe come back to my comments. But could the, I do have one question, and that is, I know there's been talk of temporary on the water district site of boat trailer storage and also permanent. If permanent storage is an option that is pursued, would that then, would then the county still build the dry stack storage building, or would they option not to build that?
Good evening, again, Brad Gross, OC Dana Point Harbor, and I am a resident of Dana Point, by the way. The dry boat storage building is as part of the plan. It's always been part of the plan and will continue to be part of the plan. If for some strange reason there's an opportunity to eliminate the dry boat storage building from the plan, that is possible. It would require a new LCPA. But as you say, if there's some sort of permanent dry boat storage made available, thirty acres, for example, I could see, and there's a net increase of dry boat storage that we would be able to maintain in the harbor, about 250 to 300 boats on the harbor due to surface storage. So I would, you know, something like that could possibly be entertained as long as the permanent storage off-site, I think, was a net increase in dry boat storage availability within the close proximity of the harbor.
Okay. And then I have another question. And maybe, well, let me, for sure, your question. I know that we're not really looking at the slip, what's happening with the slips with this review tonight, nor do we look at who the county leases to at the harbor or what restaurants you have. We're not involved in that. Do you have any response to the gentleman from Capo Beach concerning the jet skis for his comment that he had about being, losing his dock?
I'm sorry. I was out of the room for a few minutes, and I apologize for that, so I'm not aware of any comments in that direction.
What his concern was is that in the plan, he would lose his dock space or his business location space, and there wasn't an alternative. Is that something that you're familiar with, or?
No, not at all. In fact, as with any person who's conducting a business in the harbor, whether they're leasing directly through the county or they're leasing through Vintage Marina Partners, who, that particular person does lease through Vintage Marina Partners, that's a leasing issue. Nothing that I can discuss this evening. That would be something, you know, a business decision that would be made by Vintage Marina Partners and their tenant.
Okay. Thank you. And then one comment we received, you may not be aware of it, maybe this is an answer that the city staff needs to provide, but in my review of the supportive documents, I was not under the impression that a variance for building height is part of the consideration.
Actually, it's not. One of the notes that I did was in the room for that, but we can't exceed the building heights, nor do we exceed the building heights. There's only one building that meets the building heights, that's the dry boat storage building. But all the other buildings that are proposed in the plan are below the maximum building heights, and there's no exceedance because of equipment or anything like that. So we've already, we've heard those comments loud and clear for years and years, and so in the proposal, the building heights are below the maximum already. And there's no towers that were considered. I heard a comment about a tower. There's no towers, nothing like that's in the plan.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. I'd like to come back to my comments when I hear from other people's comments.
Brad, I just have one quick question on financing. You guys have a pretty certain schedule and timeline for construction of the revitalization. On the county level, I'm sure you guys have had financing discussions. Is there money earmarked? Is there any thing that you would see that would prohibit this from moving forward, from just not getting funding from the county?
No. We have a solid reserve for where we can pay cash for the first few phases. There's like, as I said, there is a funding gap. We have meetings that are scheduled as soon as we receive a CDP so that we can answer those questions. But the discussions are being had, and nothing is finalized yet. Again, we need a CDP. We need to know what we're building, that we are building something, and we'll be able to answer those questions.
Okay. Thank you.
As long as you're there.
I like to do that.
You're talking about the building heights and that nothing will exceed. What about this cell tower?
The cell tower that's there now?
Yes.
Is going to remain.
And the height of that is?
Sixty-five feet.
Doesn't that exceed our height limit?
It's been grandfathered into the plan. I don't really have an answer for you on that. The building height in the area for the boat storage building is sixty-five feet. Maybe Mr. Chilton has an answer, but I really don't know what the maximum heights for a cell tower in the area is.
Okay.
That tower has received prior approvals from both the city and the county, so as long as it's not significantly changed, I don't see any issue.
You're a boater.
Well, April hasn't.
No, I don't have a question.
Oh, okay.
I can do my comments if you want.
I'll, I agree with a lot of the speakers this evening that sixteen years is a long time for this project, but I think the complexity of it makes it difficult to get a very quick fix for this harbor. And I just want to again go on record, because I've been accused in the past of being against the revitalization of the harbor. And from the very first hearing that I heard, where we were doing the landside improvements, I have always said that I was for the landside improvements with a couple of caveats in that. One is that I'm not a fan of the dry boat storage, because we heard somebody from one of the boating organizations talk about that it fundamentally changes your relationship to your boat from a trailer to something in the dry boat storage. But I was on record years ago about the dry boat storage because of the fact that I personally think that it's not the easiest way to store boats. I think there is overheads such as somebody's going to have to run that boat storage, a county employee is going to have to be there. I don't know if it's 24/7, because over the years, we've heard a number of different points of view. But let's go back to what I'm really feeling positive. I think the plan, the design, the buildings, everything is absolutely first-rate. I did see the plans a week or two ago, and I got to tell you, I was very, very impressed with the corridor or the walkway. For years and years and years, I felt that the restaurants in the harbor never, from the very beginning, made use of being able to sit on a patio and look out at the water or look at the sailboats. You go to a number of the restaurants and you can You go to a number of the restaurants, and you can squint through the windows and see the boat masks out there. But there's not really what I call an experience unless you're on the lower level where you 're getting an ice cream or a coffee. There's not an experience of sitting in Harpoon Henry's and being able to look out and enjoy the harbor from there, or El Torito, or some of the other restaurants. And this, I think, really addresses it, becomes an outdoor walkway. It's a very attractive plan, and like I said, the fly in my ointment is what to do during the construction with the boats and the people that are in the dry storage primarily. I am in a slip in the harbor, and my boat won't go into dry storage. So I have sympathy for those individuals. Now, I heard something exciting tonight, because over the years, it's been rumored that the Water District was going to make a boat storage, RV storage, whatever you want to call it, place over there on their 30 acres. And I heard the chairman of the board, Wayne Rayfield, say that this is going on as we're speaking. I'm very happy to hear there's another alternative, albeit not a perfect alternative by a long shot. But it is an alternative, and I think it's very positive to hear that the Water District... I would urge Brad that they work with you, I urged Wayne to work with you, because you have, in my opinion, a touchy situation when you tell people that you're going to have to move out, and you're going to have to send them someplace. And, you know, if the price isn't right, or the handling of it isn't right, it certainly is going to add to your heartburn in talking to those boaters. But there is an alternative, so it's not like, "Well, we'll see you later, we don't have any spot for you," and that's not a good alternative. So I think it's going to be a very difficult five years during the transition for all the businesses, the businesses that I really enjoy and use down there, including the businesses like Wind and Sea and Turks and the deep sea fishing that I enjoy going out to. And because I'm a boater, I can easily park, because I have a parking pass that opens the gate and allows me in. And that's not true of all the Catalina people that go to Catalina, or the fishing people have another issue. But that being said, I think the plan is going to take some tremendous management for your team, Brad, to make sure that the stepwise process here, that we don't lose anybody in the shuffle, both business-wise and boater-wise, because at the end of the day, it's a harbor, and there's boaters in that harbor, and we need to make sure that they enjoy the same type of experience, because their boat doesn't change. The harbor businesses are going to change, and those businesses, I think, are going to be fantastic. And I want to support that, and I want to make it clear. However, I am still having a lot of heartburn over the dry boat stack storage. And, you know, just call me stubborn, but I don't see how that gives a person the same experience with their boat as it does on that trailer when they can roll it into the water and do what they want. But I'm anxious to hear what the rest of the commissioners have to say about this. I will agree with most all the speakers that we've waited 16 years, it's way too long, and we need to get shovels turning dirt, and we need to have beams that are riddled with termites, you know, coming down. And I'd like to hear what the rest of you have to say.
Vice Chair. If I could just note real quickly for the record that if we're moving on to Commissioner comments, that the public hearing is now closed. Unless you have any other questions of staff or...
Okay. I'd like to close the public hearing.
Perfect.
And move on to Commissioner comments. Thank you so much.
I think one of the things that we can all agree on is that the harbor and its 19th century style is not only unappealing, but it's not...it doesn't serve our needs right now. And frankly, this is an historic moment for Dana Point. And I'm honored to be a part of it. I was a part of it in 2006 with Chairman Denton and the new chair, Liz Claus. We attended...we were on the dais for both of those meetings, and now in 2014, here we are again. And it's...but all total, it's been about 17 years in making. And it may...this revitalization plan may not have everything that everybody wants, but I think it's a very good plan, and it has most of what, you know, people need. And I really like, you know, the...how the county has worked with the retailers and the restaurants, you know, phasing things over and shifting people around in order to phase this over time so that no one's losing businesses, people aren't losing their jobs, that we can, you know, keep moving forward with it in an orderly way. Let's see, what else did I want to say? The, you know, there have been so many agencies that have looked this over, whether it's our Planning Commission, the City Council, County Board of Supervisors, you know, Coastal Commission. This has been a fully vetted project. And, you know, basically, as they were saying, it's the culmination of all these meetings, and they took into consideration what people were saying. And one of the things I know, I mean, I was quoted in Orange County Register back in 2006 about the dry boat storage and how I was concerned about it, you know, blocking views and everything. And I was very satisfied to see that they have, you know, eliminated one of the buildings. And the way that it is, and most of the buildings, the way that they are situated, the highest peak runs, you know, perpendicular rather than horizontally to the coastline. So it's not blocking a lot of views. In fact, you know, even though some people are concerned about the 65-foot level or height level in certain buildings, we are gaining. It's a compromise. In some ways, we are gaining other views. And whether you're, you know, coming down Golden Lantern and you get to see more of the harbor, I think it's wonderful that from, you know, the parking lot or from various points on Golden Lantern, you can actually see the masts of the boats with this new plan. I mean, right now, you know, you kind of go up there into the parking lot, you see nothing. So I'm actually looking forward to how this is going to be reconfigured to allow more coastal views. I'm looking forward to the uniform landscaping and the lighting and the signage. I think it's wonderful to have the two-level decks where, you know, you can be upstairs, you know, sitting down dining, and you can see the harbor and the boats. It's one of the most picturesque, you know, lovely views of our town, and you can see it from two levels, whether you're walking along the, you know, main level or up above. I think it's wonderful. You know, our motto, our city's motto, is harboring the good life. Well, let's start living that motto by approving this project.
You know, we've got a pretty short piece of coastline in Dana Point, but if you look at it, we have one of the most notable headlands anywhere in the state, one of the most popular beaches and state parks anywhere in the state, and arguably, one of the very best harbors. We're really, you know, just extremely fortunate to have all these amenities right at our fingertips. But the fact of the matter is, is the harbor is getting a little old and a little rusty and a little broken down. And while the headland stands strong and does its own thing, and the beach regenerates with wave action and sand, the harbor needs some help. And this is something that, you know, has been said repeatedly over many, many years, predating my time on the commission. It's time to make a move and make this thing work right. This has been discussed, vetted, re-discussed, re-investigated, approved, amended, modified, and gone through every body that...I mean, and the unique thing is this has a lot of fingerprints. Unlike a lot of other actions in most towns, there's a lot of parties involved in here. The good thing about that is that there's a lot of parties involved, and all of the details have been gone over to great detail. And with anything that is a major change, there's going to be a few compromises along the way. But this really, from my perception, really addresses all of these at a very, very high level. And, you know, I'm confident that, you know, while there will be inconveniences throughout this, the payoff will come back manyfold over to everybody, the businesses in Town Center that are looking to come in, that have a better infrastructure, a better harbor, a better destination. The boaters with the improved docks, you know, right now, they're...you hear people tripping on the docks where they're trying to do cement work, and, you know, things are breaking down. And I think, you know, one of the components that I haven't heard tonight, which, you know, I am convinced, is one of the biggest users of our harbors are just day visitors, people that come down because this is the place to come. It's a place to go, it's a place to go get a cup of coffee, have a nice dinner, go on a first date, you know, take your first date that you married back 20 years later for an anniversary. You know, it's a place that has imprint and DNA in everybody that's been in town for any period of time. I've been in town about 18 years now. Used to drive down here when I was a kid, and I could afford enough gas from Anaheim to come down here and surf and have enough money to get my car back home, which wasn't always the case. It's something that's really dear to all of us, and I think it's great that everybody has gotten engaged, because it really shows that everybody cares about this at a very high level. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think, five years is a long time to look forward. You know, I hate to think what I'm going to look like in five years. I might not have much hair like the gentleman from the Harbor Grill, hopefully, no offense, but hopefully I keep a little more than that. But, you know, I'm a big believer in that we've got to set the table for those that are coming after us, and our kids, and their kids. And, you know, I'm comfortable and confident that this plan has all of those things in place with great consideration to public views, to positioning of buildings, to accommodating boaters, visitors. My dog loves the harbor, he's the unofficial mayor of the harbor. I joke, because everybody knows him and looks at me and goes, "Are you Pogo's dad?" So I'm very comfortable with this, I think it's a great thing. I think it is a historic moment in the city, and I think it will be a primer that will ignite a lot more to happen.
Okay, thank you. I want to take a little bit of a straw vote here. It would appear to me that Vice Chair O'Connor and Commissioner Newkirk are prepared to move this forward this evening.
Commissioner Whitaker has a...
Well, I'm moving along right now.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So now I can move on down here. Any additional comments? Are you prepared to move this, or you have some other plan?
I would like to be able to provide my comments before we make a motion, so...
Well, yes, that's why I'm doing this for a vote, yes.
Well, I'll be brief if you...let me say that I agree with the thoughtful comments made by the commissioners tonight. And I, for one, in reviewing the plans, have been very impressed with the thoroughness and the thoughtfulness of the construction management plan especially. It's not easy to build a major project and keep everything operating and going and parked and this. And I thought, I was very impressed with the thoughtfulness, and I know that during the construction, you'll run into hiccups, and you'll be able to resolve those because you have sort of so thoughtfully towards that. I'm impressed with the sign program and the furniture and the landscaping design. And the reviewing the parking management plan is, again, a thoughtful analysis and management of the parking at the harbor. I'm also...I really would...my position is I'd like to see the project go forward, and I think the storm...the stormwater mitigation and cleanup, I think that's something that we really need for water quality in the area of the harbor. I think this project will move that forward. And then concerning the design, I...you know, we are...we have just had at the commission a project where we had a height issue, and I think we're very sensitive to heights in this area. But I think that...my position is, is that we need a monumental plan for the harbor, because this is something that is an asset to Dana Point, but also to the County of Orange. And so I'm very supportive of the monumental, well-thought-out architecture that you've presented. And I do...I'm supportive of it, and I think it will be an asset to our community. And so that's my statement.
Thank you. Commissioner Denton?
Well, I don't really have anything to add, but I do have a question for the city attorney. In voting for this particular resolution tonight, it includes the concept of the dry storage, so a vote yes on this would automatically do the same for that as well.
We could parse it apart if that's necessary, or we could have one motion, both approving the CDP and approving the three earlier improvements in concept. Either way, whatever works best for the commission will work for me as well.
Well, Chairman, I would prefer that I could be able to hold back on my thoughts on the boat storage, but I do definitely want to vote for the improvements in the harbor on everything else that's on the table tonight. So that's just my thought.
For the city attorney, what's the best way for us to do it?
It sounds like maybe, from what I'm hearing, that you might be ready to vote on the coastal, the CDP, the coastal development permit, and those are for the landside improvements. And then after we take that vote, maybe if there's further comments or discussion, we could then take a vote on the improvements that you're approving in concept. Those are the improvements that are both landside and have some water elements as well. And those improvements are all the final decision will be made by the Coastal Commission.
Okay. Is there any of the commissioners that would like to move any or all of those forward?
Could I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I move adoption of coastal development permit, CDP 13-0018, for the development otherwise referred to as the Commercial Core Project, a parking management plan, and a master sign program.
Do you second?
I'll second.
Okay.
One vote.
Yeah.
I have a point of clarification now. Okay, so what falls under the concept for the Dana Point Harbor then? It's just the dry storage, or is there more to that?
It's the dry storage. There's a jib crane bridge, and pardon me if I am screwing up how I --
You can put that inside.
Right. It's part of the dry storage dock, is my understanding. And there's also some storm drain improvements.
So we're getting rid of -- I mean --
We're just going to do a separate resolution.
So as a clarification of my motion, I'm just moving the CDP plus the parking management plan and the sign program. I'm moving for a second motion, all those items under 2, A, B, and C. You can discuss that separately.
Where are you getting 2, A, B, and C?
On the --
What page?
Front page.
Hmm? What page is it on?
Oh. Oh, okay.
Get this one.
Where are we here?
Well, I think we were seconded, so.
Motion in a second to approve everything except 2, A, B, and C.
Okay.
And we just need a vote.
Okay. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And that way I have 2 approval in concept for the boat storage, bridge length, jib crane, and infrastructure improvements.
And I'll make a second motion?
Okay.
I'll move approval in concept of the design of the dry stack boat storage, the design of a 25-foot-high, four-ton-capacity, 18-foot, bridge-length jib crane, and the abandonment of the existing storm drain outfall D and replacement with a 42-inch outfall located outside the proposed dry stack boat storage building.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a clarification on the storm drain. That would only happen if it's part of the dry stack?
That's my understanding. Let's get a clarification.
I might want to ask Brad, but my understanding is that if the dry stack is not built, they may not have to relocate the storm drain, but I'll have to ask them.
Okay, that's because of the dry stack, then you have to relocate the drain?
Correct.
Okay. And if the dry stack isn't built, then you don't have to deal with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
May I just ask for a point of clarification, Jennifer? Would the -- I think in the interest of not confusing the Coastal Commission, I think it might be better if it can have both actions included in a single resolution. Is that possible, rather than two separate resolutions?
It sounds to me that some of the commissioners might have different feelings on the different improvements that are being considered, so that's why I think two resolutions will probably work here.
Okay.
Could I ask a point of clarification from my reading? It sounded like item one of the CDP approval would require that item two in concept to be conforming to all of the items with regard to parking, boat storage, and such. So if it isn't approved, then the CDP doesn't meet all the marks for final approval.
John, is that your understanding?
It's a good question. What it's -- the boat storage building is satisfying the requirement for the amount of dry boat storage, so there would have to be an alternative for the rest of the project to move forward to that. I don't -- I'm not sure what that alternative might be. Whether or not if the boat storage building is not built, I know Brad had mentioned that it might require us to go back to the Coastal Commission to amend the LCP. That may be the case. We'd have to talk to the Coastal Commission about that if there was -- I think their primary goal is in meeting the minimum required amount of boat storage. Whether or not that's satisfied with the boat storage building, if the boat storage building is not there and it's alternatively supplied, they may not require an LCP. But I just am not sure I can answer that question. It's possible.
Madam Chair, can we possibly have Brad come up and tell us what he needs?
Very simply, I need to be able to store 493 boats inside the LCP, inside the boundaries of the LCP.
So we can't bifurcate? Your viewpoint is that you can't bifurcate these two things because the Coastal Commission is going to want them all in one package?
As I understand it, I'm not an attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong. As I mentioned earlier, when Commissioner Denton was answering the question about the dry boat storage building, it's three years down the road. If for some reason there was direction given that said, "We would like to explore an LCPA", another LCPA specifically concerning the dry boat storage building, you may be successful in a modified plan. Now, that's a big if. That's a very big if. And it would have to, as I said, the only way that it makes sense to me is by being able to increase boat storage in the local vicinity. And we all know that that's, you know, we have the 30 acres possibility at the Southwest Water District property, but how long is that for? So we have a good plan in front of you.
My take on the approval in concept and why we could do two separate resolutions is because we're really not the final approval authority. What we do here tonight is really just nothing more than conceptual, and because it has to go to the Coastal Commission anyways, and they make the final determination, that's really where --
For the dry boat storage building, correct?
Yes.
So you're approving the concept, and Coastal will approve the CDP, and if there's some more issues that find their way to the surface during that hearing with Coastal, things may change.
In other words, the Coastal Commission can do whatever they want, regardless of what we do tonight, with respect to the approvals in concept.
Yeah.
It is the Coastal Commission.
I mean, to put it bluntly.
Aye, thank you.
Okay.
All right. So does that leave us that we can do it separately, bifurcating it, or no?
John, does that satisfy your concerns, or?
Yes, but again, the more I think about it, it would clearly have to go back to the Coastal Commission to amend the LCP if you can't fit the required amount of boat storage within the boundary of the site. If, you know, and the way the plan is designed right now, it needs the boat storage building. Without it, there'd have to be so many significant other changes to the overall site plan and maybe even the boundaries of the planning areas. It's just hard to say.
Well, my feeling is I prefer not to separate this. I'd prefer not to bifurcate it, because the last thing I really want to do is have to come back and do this again and bring all these people out so that they can, you know, speak and waste their time. I really feel like we should just do it completely in total and finish it. I mean, I understand, because it's just the concept. Whether it's actually built or not is not guaranteed. It's just the concept, so I --
I would certainly agree with you. That it'd be simpler to do one resolution. If there's an intent to break it apart, I think we can do that as well, but I'm hearing concerns from Brad and John. So if there's a desire to do it as one resolution, that would definitely be the easier process.
Well, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners, I mean, can we keep it all together, or do you feel strongly about?
If I, for the chair, may add, having the Coastal Commission approve a coastal development permit that's consistent with the local, with the LCP, is a much easier decision for them to make than for them to amend the LCP. And what I'm hearing is that without the boat storage building being approved in concept, it's possibly an LCPA. So I just wanted you to be aware of those facts as you deliberate.
Would the LCPA come back to us again?
Yes. And then to the city council, and then to the Coastal Commission.
Yeah. See, that's --
I'm certainly willing to -- I don't know, we voted, we voted on our first motion. I don't know if we can rescind that vote to change it.
We could rescind that vote if you would be willing to make a new motion.
Yes. Okay. I will be, I am willing to make a new motion, but I would like to add why I'm in supportive of the conceptual approval of the dry stack. And the reason is, is I think that it is a facility, it's pretty exciting to be able to motor up in the water, have a crane hoist your boat, and store it. I think that's something 40 years from now we'll enjoy having at the harbor. So that's why I'm in supportive of including it. So with that, I rescind my previous motion and would make a new motion. To do that, I need to get to the resolution. I move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Dana Point approving coastal development permit, CDP 13-0018, for development otherwise referred to as the Commercial Core Project, a parking management plan, a master sign program, and approvals in concept for the Dana Point Harbor.
And I, once again, second your motion.
Any discussion? Okay. We're ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 4-1. Motion passes. All right, next.
Can I just be clear for the record? That was a 4-1 vote?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
All right. Where are we next?
Yeah, where do we go next? Oh, new business? New business? Shouldn't it -- okay. Do we have any new --
No.
Oh, okay. We're now moving to new business, and I believe there is no business. No new business. Okay. Okay. So we can move to -- shouldn't I wait for them to --
As you're exiting, can we ask you to -- where's your gavel?
Oh, I need to use this.
We're still holding on. One wish, please. If you want to exit, please exit quietly. Thank you.
And thank you very much for being here. The comments that you made are important to this, and it's a nice way to serve your community, so I hope you have enjoyed this tonight. And so I think now we move on to staff reports.
Thank you for me. Nothing for me either.
We move to Commissioner comments.
I have a comment. I have two. One, this weekend is the Doheny Blues Festival, so avoid traffic by driving around the -- don't exit on Pacific Coast Highway. And then my second one is a more serious one, and that is the pools in the -- you know, do we need, I guess what I was thinking of is, do we need a policy direction on pools, on bluff tops? And one thought that I had about that, that I was thinking staff could, or my other commissioners, what you thought, is that what if somebody puts a pool on a bluff top, given that we don't even allow irrigation? That's how serious we are about bluff tops development. That we require them to maintain liability insurance?
Well, one I just wanted to clarify, that we don't allow irrigation within that prescribed setback. So we've heard, I think, by default, it's 40 feet. If they can, through a study, prove that it needs to be, that it can be less, I think the past two projects went back to 30 feet. That's where we don't allow the irrigation. But on the other side of that, I believe it can be irrigated, although we like to encourage drought-tolerant plants anywhere, whether you're on a bluff or not, particularly with the water shortage that we currently are experiencing. Currently, pools are allowed, and I think you get into property rights issues. I mean, for us to not be able to allow pools, it would certainly have to be a zoning issue, a land use issue, some kind of development standard where they're not allowed. And I think that it would have to go to the city council. I think if the Planning Commission wanted to agendaize it and make some kind of policy recommendation to the city council, you know, certainly that would be at your discretion to do, but I think that it would be pretty controversial, and I think you'd have some property rights concerns from some.
May I add some information? And it sounds like, I mean, occasionally we do with Brad Fowler and his staff, we provide sort of a workshop on coastal bluff issues, and it sounds like we might be, we might be ready for it, if that's something you want to pursue. With respect to pools, there might be some confusion. Pools are not allowed in the minimum required setback from a bluff. It's not like you can, here's your house, and then you can put your pool out farther. You have to, if you want a pool in your back, in your bluff top yard, backyard, you have to move your house back to allow for that. So a house weighs a lot more than a pool. I agree that a pool, if a pool fails or overflows, that certainly can be a problem. But a pool, from a structural standpoint, is really usually much less impactful than the actual house. Additionally, and this is something that I didn't realize until we got into this business, is that the weight of the land is, of soil, is much, much heavier than the weight of water. So you're actually taking a load off the bluff by building a pool, believe it or not. So again, I think the biggest issue is really overflow possibly causing erosion if somebody left their -- but most pools nowadays have ability to handle overflow. They don't really overflow. It's the water's taken away. So but if the commission wants to have maybe another workshop on just bluff top issues in general and setbacks and so on, we can, we're happy to do that.
Okay. I'm just interested what other -- I know this is, we had concerns, not two times in a row on it, but I think we just got our workshop. I think that was it.
Commissioner Denton?
Just a clarification. So then if there's a 40-foot setback and the applicant wants to go to 25 feet or something less than 40, which we have done in the past, they would not theoretically then be allowed to put a pool in the 25-foot area. That would have to be at least 30, like we heard tonight? 30 minimum?
It's the 25 is the minimum.
Okay, 25, but not into 25?
But not in the 25, correct.
Okay. I see. That makes a lot of sense.
So if you, but if you, if you have a 20, most areas in the city and the bluffs have a 20, minimum 25-foot setback. So if you want to have a pool between the setback and the house, you're going to have to move the house back.
Okay. That's fine.
Vice Chair O'Connor?
I just wanted to say congratulations to our new chairperson, and also to thank everyone for your vote of support in voting me in as vice chair. I really appreciate it, and we're also going to miss Gary as chairperson. He did a great job. He did a great job.
Commissioner Newkirk?
Congratulations to the new chair and vice chair, and I would like to thank staff and my fellow commissioners for putting up with me for the last year. It's actually been a lot of fun. I really enjoyed it, I've learned a lot. I appreciate all of your input, your honesty, and the hard work that you do for the city.
Okay. And I would like to thank my fellow commissioners for how slow I am to ramp up on this. I think we've done a good job today. There was a lot of very technical stuff that came our way and I think we dealt with it very well. I'd like to thank Mr. Gross, you were wonderful at explaining things to us, and certainly to staff for helping us get to where we needed, needed to get. So I thank you very much, and unless we have something else going on, this meeting is adjourned to, hang in there for a second. This is the, to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission, which will be held on Monday, June 9th, 2014, beginning at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter. The City Council Chamber located at, I have my glasses on, address Golden Lantern Suite 210, Dana Point, okay.